All right, Councilmember Willie is back on the dais. And so, out in Zoom land, Councilmember Wei, Vice Mayor Chow will be starting back up again, along with members of the public. Welcome back again. We're on consent calendar. This is items nine through thirty-six, with the exception of item fourteen. So the first question I'll ask is whether anyone wants to pull an item or items off of consent calendar? And I see an indication from Councilmember Moore. Councilmember Moore, what item or items would you like to pull off of consent?
Okay, thank you, Mayor Paul. I would like to pull items twenty-five through, let's make sure I've got them all, thirty-two.
Twenty-five through thirty-two, okay. One moment.
And, well, once we get into it, it'll make more sense. But I particularly want us to look at the April.
That's fine, you don't need to give your reasons. It's just a matter of, you know, items are pulled if you ask for them to be pulled. So let's go ahead. Are there any other members of council that want any items pulled? Items twenty-five through thirty-two, as a reminder, are already pulled. Okay, so I don't see any further indications from council. And so, Councilmember Moore, you're indicating again, did you want to pull anything else?
There, I don't think we need to pull it, but I think for members of the public to know that item thirty-six, Memorial Park Ponds Repurposing Project Contract is in there. And so people know that that's going to be moving forward. I think that's a good bit of news.
Okay, well, thank you for making that note. So I'll go ahead and move this to members of the public. And this is only if you want to pull an item. Please raise your hands to let us know what item that is. And as a reminder, that's items nine through thirty-six, except for fourteen, which has already been postponed under postponements, and then items twenty-five through thirty-two, which Councilmember Moore has pulled off of consent. Okay, I don't see any hands raised from the public. And so what I'll do now is I'll ask for a motion to pass the consent calendar items. Those would be nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, and fifteen through twenty-four, and thirty-three through thirty-six. And so I saw Council, Vice Mayor Chow had her hand raised in Zoom first, followed by Councilmember Moore. And so Vice Mayor Chow, would you like to pass that motion? I'm sorry, would you like to make that motion, rather?
Actually, I want to pull the item for the pond repurposing project in addition to performing for more. So I'll make the motion to pull that item and the items mentioned by Councilmember Moore.
Okay, well, one more time, Vice Mayor Chow, what item? Because your audio blipped a little bit when you described it.
The pond.
The Memorial Park item? Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so let me get back to this. So we have items twenty-five through thirty-two, in addition to item thirty-six pulled. So let's go ahead and entertain that motion for items nine through thirty-six, except for items fourteen, twenty-five through thirty-two, and item thirty-six. And so Vice Mayor Chow, can you confirm you're making that motion to pass the consent calendar as recommended in the agenda?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore, are you seconding that motion?
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second for consent calendar items nine through thirteen, fifteen through twenty-four, thirty-three, thirty-four, and thirty-five. Madam City Clerk, could you please conduct a roll call vote on that motion?
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Wei?
Aye.
Councilmember Willie?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Chow?
Aye.
Mayor Paul?
Yes.
Motion carries the amnesty.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. All right, so we are on to item number twenty-five. Taking a look at item number twenty-five, it looks like that is an accounts payable item, and that goes all the way through to item twenty-eight. So four items are accounts payable, four items are treasures reports, monthly, whether they be investment or the monthly treasures report. So let's go ahead and take the accounts payable items. Councilmember Moore, did you want to speak to items twenty-five through twenty-eight before we refer to staff and the reason that you are requesting or that you have pulled the items from the consent calendar?
Okay, so as you know, we are on the subcommittee looking at the monthly treasurer's report formatting. And I believe it was the suggestion that we have the accounts payable combined with the monthly treasurer's report as one item in an attachment, rather than seeing each week separately. So it will actually reduce space in the agenda, for one, but it will also consolidate the accounts payable next to the, so it'll be next to the statements that we have for the checking account, which it's referencing. And then I'd also like if there is a possibility that because the accounts payable ended April twenty-fifth, and the bank statement is for the month of April, the entire month, I was wondering if we would have available the overlapping accounts payable week, which would, I'm going to assume it goes into May, but that way we can actually see everything that happened during the month of April, would be my request. And that's something, as we, you know, provide an update from the subcommittee, that we can make that suggestion. But I could not, because of the way that the accounts payable ended, I could not make any determination based on the monthly statement for April twenty-two in the, they're calling it the investment report, but I think it might more appropriately be broken down a little bit differently. And we can have that discussion with staff, but I hope that's making some sense. But I would like to, moving on from the accounts payable, look at item twenty-nine and hear the monthly treasurer's investment report for April. And then item thirty, here are the report for April. So we have the investment report and the monthly treasurer's report.
So why don't we do this? So twenty-nine and thirty are also April twenty-two, and they are respectively what you've just described as the monthly treasurer's investment report, or at least as described on the agenda, and the monthly treasurer's report respectively. It sounds like what you'd like to do is to request a consolidated report that includes the accounts payable, which here would be items twenty-five through twenty-eight, combined with twenty-nine and thirty, which, you know, again, are those, you know, different treasures reports. So, but what I'm hearing is that you want to hear item twenty-nine and you want to hear item thirty. So let me ask you, what is your request for items twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven, and twenty-eight? Is that basically to set that aside, or set those items aside? And then, once items twenty-nine and thirty have been heard, are we to anticipate that you'll be requesting that we consolidate all these items into one report?
I think as we move forward to May, that we can pass this, actually, no, I can't actually let it pass through, because we're still missing a week for the end of April, for the April report. So, yeah, so we do need to see the last few days of April, because we're missing that. So for a complete report, I would want to see the last week. You understand, because when you look at number, item twenty-eight, we're ending at April twenty-fifth, and as we see, when we see the monthly treasurer's investment report, the Wells Fargo operating checking account statement for April twenty-two, it'll be for the entire month.
I understand what you're saying. I mean, you would want a full month before approving the accounts payable, and then you've got a monthly treasurer's investment report for that same month, and then a monthly treasurer's report, as it's called right now, for the same month as well, in items twenty-nine and thirty respectively. So it sounds like what you're trying to ask for is a consolidated report with accounts payable, investments, and what's basically evolving within the treasurer's report right now.
Right.
And just to kind of take a step back for the, I think, benefit of the public, the treasurer's report is something that we're codified in multiple places, not just in our code, but in state code, to provide, it just wasn't being provided, and, you know, as you correctly pointed out, you know, that was a requirement. So I think what makes sense at this point, since you're not asking for twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven, and twenty-eight to be passed right now, I'll go ahead and ask for input on these items from other members of council. But if there isn't, then let's just go ahead and, you know, move forward from twenty-five through twenty-eight for the time being, until we can get to twenty-nine and then thirty. So I do see a hand raised from Councilmember Wei. And so Councilmember Wei, did you want to speak to these items that we currently have in front of us, twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight?
Yes, thanks, Mayor. I would like to ask some clarification requests from Councilmember Moore. Does she mean that she doesn't want the weekly accounts payable, she wants a monthly account payable?
Yes, let me go ahead and direct that question over. Councilmember Moore, did you want to speak to Councilmember Wei's question?
Well, staff can include them on a weekly basis, as they are doing it, but it, in my opinion, we should have it within the monthly treasurer's report, as opposed to having them separate in the agenda, because it fits the topic of the monthly treasurer's report to have them there.
So, Sir Mayor, may I ask the staff a question?
Yes, please, go ahead.
Yeah, because the months and the weeks don't coincide a lot of times. You know, as you can see, our paychecks sometimes go overlap, because it's monthly and weekly in the accounting, doesn't seem to overlap, I mean, match exactly. So I'd like to know the staff, is it possible to do weekly plus the monthly, or is that double work, or how does that work? Because the month and week don't match.
Yeah, they don't all start in the same, so, yeah, let's direct that question to staff. So Jim, you have your microphone?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, Council. I'm, you know, I can, I'll need to verify with Christina, our finance director, but I believe we can run a weekly report, but it is, there is an overlap, so we don't always coincide with the end of the month. I mean, it just, that's the way it is, even like the paychecks. But I'm going to ask Christina if she can, because she's doing this on a more daily basis.
Okay, well, welcome, Director Alfaro.
Thank you, Mayor Paul. So we run accounts payable or checks on a weekly basis, and they're all run on the same day. So which is why we provide the reports weekly, so we can see the weekly check runs that occur. To run them on a monthly basis, you're still going to have that gap, because checks get run on generally Thursday of every week.
Right, so let me see if I can understand the tension here. So it sounds like the weekly reports would be workable for what the concern Councilmember Moore has. I think, if I'm understanding the concern correctly, you know, and even though we're colleagues on the Audit Committee, that doesn't mean we have the exact, you know, kind of same wavelength of understandings on all these items. But I think the concern is trying to take these weekly accounts payable reports and synergize them with the monthly treasurer's reports and the monthly treasurer's investment reports, which, you know, I actually, I really do see the utility of that, because it makes for a more cohesive monthly treasurer's report that is, you know, the subject of, well, Councilmember Moore was, you know, in fact, very correctly identifying as a statutory requirement, and a good one, actually. Now that, I will say this, and I apologize for interjecting and delaying, you know, your further comment, Councilmember Moore, but I will say that the first efforts at delivering these monthly reports have been very illuminating. I mean, I've sat on the Audit Committee for multiple times over seven and a half years, and I will say that the information that we're now getting at the Audit Committee, that is now described as the monthly treasurer's report, is much, is a much more complete picture on a monthly basis of our finances. So, but at the same time, that's a bit of a work in progress, because it's not something that we've been delivering consistently, or at all frankly, for the last, you know, years. And it's a requirement that, you know, I think the nature of which has changed a lot over time, as, you know, we were incorporated in nineteen fifty-five, the codified requirements came in over time, and as a lot of these codified requirements, you know, are, we're not unique, we're kind of ignored. But that doesn't mean that it's not, you know, good to follow them, or it doesn't have some, you know, public transparency and understanding-based utility to follow them. And we're certainly doing a lot of that work to, you know, achieve a point where we have a good monthly treasurer's report. So I think that's all by way of basically saying that I think we could still deliver these accounts payable reports on a weekly basis, but there might be a possibility that if the consideration is basically to fold that into the monthly treasurer's report, as we're required to deliver it, maybe it makes more sense to then turn that into a monthly accounts payable, so that it actually, you know, tracks with the weekly accounts payable. Or an alternative might be keep the weekly accounts payable, but when you produce the monthly treasurer's report, fold into that, you know, the beginning to the end of that particular month with accounts payable. So I think those are a couple of the options that we have in front of us. I would say, you know, I mean, given what we've already done on a past practice basis, maybe keep the weekly accounts payable, you know, system, and then, you know, kind of, you know, kind of change a few buttons, and hopefully that can, you know, be done. I see our city manager nodding, which is great, you know, that's very heartening, because, you know, Jim has thirty years in finance experience. That wasn't all in the private sector, in the public sector, right? So you actually had a prior private sector, you know, so, yeah, so Jim has thirty years of finance experience. So, I mean, it's very heartening to see that nod, that we can both have a weekly, you know, accounts payable statement, and one that actually comports and combines with this, you know, monthly treasurer's report, that we're very rightly, and thank you, Councilmember Moore, for doing all that work, you know, and putting that forward. So does that work, you know, just kind of talking this through? Would that work for what you're thinking about, Councilmember Moore?
Yeah, yes, it would, Mayor Paul. I'd like to have the report for twenty-nine and thirty, if we can hear it. I think that.
For twenty-nine and thirty? Well, so let's, before we go on to that, I mean, that being the case, would you be willing to consider moving items twenty-five through twenty-eight? If that's kind of our understanding that going forward, we could, well, actually, let me check in with our finance director as well, so, or Director of Admin Services. Christina, could that software be, you know, modified to the extent that we're producing accounts payable reports on a monthly basis, and fold it into the monthly treasurer's report?
We could, but you're still going to have some of that gap in terms of, say, the checks are run, and then when, so when the end of the month is versus when the next check run happens, you're still going to have that gap, because we're only doing, it's not like we're looking to make sure all the checks are run at the end of the month, on the thirtieth or the thirty-first of that month.
Of course.
And then it will include everything, so you're still going to have some of that gap, but I can double check. I'm assuming that we can actually select the start date and the end date to be able to get all those checks that get run in a month.
Yeah, and it sounds like, you know, drop your explanatory footnotes where needed, I think, in this, and then we can try out, okay, we'll see. So, okay, so with that, Councilmember Moore, would you be willing to set forward the recommended actions on the consent calendar for items twenty-five through twenty-eight? I'm not trying to pressure you, I'm just trying to see whether we can, you know.
I think for the May report, I'd like to, I'd like to see the full month of May, even if it has to extend out, if the weekly reports have to extend out into April and June, in order to encompass the whole month. And there may be that, moving forward, we're going to have to repeat a week because of the overlap on each end.
Well, I guess what I'm suggesting, right, what I'm suggesting is that we keep the weekly reports, but then also have a monthly report that encompasses, you know, accounts payable.
Well, I think having the monthly report makes it easier for the public to look at the statements in the monthly report. If that's not a significant amount of work for that report to be generated, then yes. Otherwise, just give the overlapping weeks that move on, just so that the full month is encompassed.
So that does sound like, at this point, we can go ahead and move items twenty-five through twenty-eight, as long as we move forward with May, you know, keeping it on a monthly basis, for the accounts payable as part of the monthly treasurer's report.
Yes, and when we get to twenty-nine, with regards to the staff report, the more definitions that are provided for the public, so that we understand the budget and what these statements, what each one of these accounts is, I think that, providing that education as moving forward, it'd be, the same definitions would come out each month, just so that people know, you know, what is this LEAF statement, what does that even mean? So that we know where our money is being invested and kept. I mean, even the last Audit Committee meeting, I learned of a new account, the BNY Mellon account, which is now added into this report, which we were never receiving those statements.
Okay, well, before we get to the reports, let's.
So yes, the answer is yes.
Okay, great, so let's have a confirmation, you will move items twenty-five through twenty-eight as in the consent calendar recommendation?
Yes, with the stipulation that moving forward, we'll have the full month.
As well in the treasurer's part, great. All right, so that's the motion. Would anyone like to second Councilmember Moore's motion? Vice Mayor Chow, your hand is raised, would you like to second?
Yeah, second, and I have a request, though.
Okay, state your request, please.
So I understand that Councilmember Moore is trying to make the report more readable and more accessible by the public. I wonder if we can make all of the accounts payable and monthly treasurer's report on the city website, so that everything is in one place, not scattered in different council meeting agenda? I think that way we'll make it even more accessible to the public, because they come out at different timing. And then even if a month is not entirely in one city council agenda, they will be on our website, so.
I would imagine that's a fairly readily, you know, done task, and so, you know, maybe I'll ask one of the interns to interface with the city clerk's office and finance to achieve that. I do see, Jim, with a hand raised?
Oh, I was just going to, I was just going to say that, yes, I just got a response that, yes, we can add it to the website.
Wonderful, excellent. So thank you, Vice Mayor Chow, for the second, as well as the comment. We have a motion on the table for items twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven, and twenty-eight. I don't see further hands raised, and so Madam City Clerk, if you could please take a roll call vote on those items.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Wei?
Aye.
Councilmember Willie?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Chow?
Aye.
Mayor Paul?
Yes.
Motion carries the amnesty.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. So we're on to item number twenty-nine, that is, once again, consider the monthly treasurer's investment report for April two thousand and twenty-two. Jim, would you like to introduce the item, or introduce the person that is going to be presenting, excuse me, that is going to be presenting on this item? Thanks.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to, actually, I'll turn it back over to our administrative services director, Christina, and I think she might be having Thomas do it, but not positive.
Okay, great, welcome back, Christina.
Thank you, I will be having Thomas Lee Young, acting finance manager, present this audit, so I will hand it over to him for the presentation as well.
Thank you, Director Alfaro, welcome, Thomas.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor. Just let me share my screen a quick. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council. Today, I'll be discussing the treasurer's investment report for April, for the month ending April thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-two. I'll be talking about policies that govern our investments, as well as going through cash and investments, and then discussing the city's compliance. The city's investments are governed by state law and the city's investment policy. On May nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-two, the city council approved the most recent city investment policy. Under the city's investment policy, the treasurer shall submit monthly transaction reports to the city council within thirty days of the end of the reporting period, in accordance of California Government Code five three six oh seven. This monthly investment report is in addition to a quarterly investment report, which is also submitted to the city council. The quarterly investment report offers a more extensive discussion on the city's economy, cash flow, and investments. In addition, the city's municipal code requires that the treasurer provide monthly reports to the city council, and also the Audit Committee Charter states that the Audit Committee reviews these reports. The city also has two Section one hundred and fifteen trusts, one for pension and one for OPEB, and these are governed by separate investment policies. Now I'll be describing the city's cash and investments. The city pools cash and investments for all funds except restricted funds. However, they accounts for interest, revenue, and expenditures separately for each fund. Pooling funds is a common practice in public agencies, and by pooling funds, the city is able to benefit from economies of scale, diversification, liquidity, and ease of administration. On the left-hand side, we can see that the city has two hundred and twenty-eight point four million in cash and investments. First, we will look at cash and investments by fund type on the left-hand side, and then secondly, we will look at it by account type. And as you can see, the same total in each chart, two hundred and twenty-eight point four million, but the investments are pooled on the right-hand side. The city's largest fund is the general fund, which has a hundred and nine point three million in cash and investments. Now we look at cash and investments by account type on the right-hand side, and we can see that we have twenty-five point four million in cash, twenty-one point one million in cash equivalents, which is LEAF, or Local Agency Investment Fund, which I'll discuss in more detail shortly. And then we also have a hundred and fifty-six point nine million in investments, which are invested with Chandler Asset Management. And then finally, we also have eighteen point five million in restricted assets, so these are investments that are restricted for pension purposes, so that these assets are held in our pension Section one fifteen trust. And here, we are comparing our cash and investments to the previous month, and we can see that we started the month with two hundred and twenty-one point eight million in cash and investments across all funds, and ended the month with two hundred and twenty-eight point four million in cash and investments. And this is due to receipts of seventeen point two million, and disbursements of eleven million, and general adjustments of four hundred and twenty-six thousand. And so general adjustments refer to any council-approved budget adjustments, as well as quarterly cost allocation, plan expenses, quarterly interest revenues, as well as any revenues that are received outside our financial system. So this would be revenues from our Parks and Recreation Center, mainly, as these are tracked in our active net Parks and Recreation System, and then imported into a financial And we can see that cash and investments increased in the month of April, and primarily this was due to a four point seven million in property tax for the vehicle license fee, or VLF swap. And the VLF swap revenues are mainly received in January and April every year. And on this slide, we have our general ledger balances. So on the left-hand side, we show our various accounts. Our main account, our main cash account is our operating checking account of Wells Fargo. And then we also have a workers' compensation checking account of Wells Fargo, and a payroll checking account as well. In addition, we have eight thousand dollars in our BNY Mellon bond account. So this is cash that was proceeds from our previous debt refinancing a couple of years ago. And then we also have five thousand, one hundred dollars in petty cash and change at our various city locations. The city also has twenty-one million invested in the Local Agency Investment Fund, or LEAF. So LEAF is an investment pool administered by the California State Treasurer. It's considered a cash equivalent, because cities can withdraw funds at any time. And so the city invests in LEAF for short-term investments, additional liquidity, and yield. The city also has an investment portfolio managed by Chandler Asset Management, in accordance to a California Government Code and the city's investment policy. And the city has a hundred and fifty-six point nine million in those accounts. And then finally, the city has two Section one fifteen pension and OPEB trusts. A Section one fifteen trust is a tax-exempt investment tool that allows local governments to pre-fund pension and retiree health costs. The pension trust was established in fiscal year two thousand and nineteen to reduce pension rate volatility, and the OPEB, or Other Post-Employment Benefits Trust, was established in fiscal year two thousand and ten to pre-fund OPEB costs. Public Agency Retirement Services, also known as FARs, is the trust administrator, and US Bank is the investment manager for these trusts. The pension trust has shown as restricted cash and investments, as assets can be used to fund capital costs. The OPEB trust is not shown on this slide, because these assets are not used for the city's programs, rather they are used to fund benefits to retirees. In addition, we also have a Wells Fargo checking account for flexible spending, employee benefits, which is not shown on this slide as well, because these funds are used, these funds are. are employee contributions, and so cannot be used to fund the city's programs. And so, on the previous slide here, we have our general ledger balances. So these are the balances in our financial system, and on the right-hand side, we have our bank balances. And so, the difference between these two types of balances is that the bank statement only includes checks and deposits that were cleared by the bank. And so, it differs from the general ledger balance due to outstanding checks, as well as deposits and transit. In addition, the investment balance is different, and that is because interest is updated quarterly for LEAF and in for LEAF in the investment portfolio, and then also investment market values are updated annually in June at year-end. And so, on this slide, we can see that we have $31.8 million in our operating cash account, $21.1 million in LEAF, and $148.9 million in our investment portfolio, and finally, $16.4 million in our pension trust. And now, in terms of compliance, the city's investments are required to comply with California Government Code and the city's investment policy. One, all of the city's investments on compliance of state law and the investment policy; and two, in compliance with Government Code 53646, the city has sufficient funds to meet its expenditure requirements for the next six months. Presentation, and I look forward to your questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Thomas. We'll go to our members of the public first for our usual practice, and if there are any members of the public that have comments on item number 29, please raise your hand in Zoom, or you can fill out a blue card live or email the city clerk. I don't see any hands raised in Zoom, and Madam City Clerk, if you'll just, you know, confirm that you don't have blue cards on this item.
No, Mayor.
Okay. Okay, so we'll go ahead and just give people maybe 10 or 15 seconds in case they do have something that they want to want to share here. And also, just as a matter of notifying the public, there is the ability to have your comment read into the record if you emailed during the time the first person is speaking. But of course, if no one is speaking, then that time is necessarily constrained. So at this point, I'll go ahead and bring it back to the council, item 29. Thomas, thank you very much for an excellent report, and I'll go ahead and ask our council to pose any questions or requests for further information in this first round. Following those questions and those clarifications and those requests for material information, we'll go ahead and ask for a motion. The default motion, since this is a pulled consent calendar item, is to accept the monthly Treasurers' investment report for April 2022, as it states on the agenda. And so, I see the Vice Mayor, her hand is raised in Zoom, and so we'll start with you, Vice Mayor.
All right, that's left over.
Oh, it's left over. Okay, so let me ask a question, then. Did you, Councilmember Moore, since you you pulled the item, did you want to, I'll cede the floor to you first before I ask my question?
Okay, thank you, Mayor Paul. And thank you, Thomas, for a very thorough report, and I'm wondering if the if the slides are available, if your presentation is available for the public, and if not, if that could be provided, I think that would be really helpful. And I really like the idea of having the monthly reports put on the website. I have seen that in some other cities for each month, and I think that'll that will really help moving forward. But thank you again for a very thorough report.
Thank you, Councilmember Moore, and thanks again, Thomas. Let me refer your question to the city clerk's office, because I know that they, I'm looking at the webpage right now, maybe, yeah, actually, I'll go ahead and share my screen on that one. Madam City Clerk, can you confirm whether we have this presentation available to the public?
I do not believe we we would post it prior to it being presented as, since it was on consent, it wasn't expected that it would be.
I see, I see.
But we can certainly post it tomorrow as a late written communication.
Okay, well, so so as the members of the public can see, I'm on Cupertino dot Legisstar dot com, but if you go to, if you go to the homepage Cupertino dot org, you can easily navigate to our agendas. What you want to do, and I think if I just back up one, yeah, what you want to do is to go, you know, to one of these pages where it has all the tabs and city council, and then when you click on this, under meeting details, is where you get the the page with all the really, really great links, searchable packet, amended, this is the original searchable packet. So what we want for presentations, I think, you'll see that this link will be updated probably 6/8/2022 with with Thomas's presentation. And, you know, again, you know, Thomas, I think we all commend you for your, you know, thoroughness of the information. A lot of this, a lot of this can get very conflated, but if you're, you know, really, I think, I think you very clearly have categorized this, and this is, you know, just, you know, one of the one of the reports I've seen financially that really helps to crystallize a lot of, you know, from an investment perspective, where our funding is. So let's go ahead and move that default item. Would anyone like to do so? I'm looking around. Councilmember Willie moves. Would anyone like to second? Councilmember Moore seconds, and so that is the item as described on the agenda, item 29. Madam City Clerk, would you please conduct a roll call vote?
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Wei?
Aye.
Councilmember Willie?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Chow?
Aye.
Mayor Paul?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. We're on to item number 30 now. The subject is to consider the monthly Treasurers' report for April 2022. So rather than going through Jim and then Christina, let me just directly ask Thomas, who's camera is still on. Thomas, did you prepare a presentation for item number 30 as well?
I can briefly go through the reports for item number 30.
Okay, very good. Take it away.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council. Today, I'll be going through the monthly Treasurers' report for April 2022. And so, there is some overlap between this report and the investment report, in that this one, we also talk about our cash and investment balance, but on this report, we will also be talking about fund balance. And so, this report is governed by Government Code 41004, so a different portion of Government Code, and this code requires the city to present receipts, disbursements, and fund balance to city council on a monthly basis. And this is also required in our municipal code as well. And so, this report shows receipts, disbursements, and cash balance. And so, you can see that the totals are the same as our investment reports. We have $221.8 million at the start of the month, and then $228.4 million at the end of the month.
Thomas, I'm sorry to interrupt you. Do this, I see you're zoomed in at 102%. Because of an artifact of the way that our information is presented, there is a bar on the bottom, you don't see it on Zoom, but if you can zoom in a little bit, 75, yeah, I know the, maybe make it like 90, maybe you can just type in 90%, and I think that would just give you the entire thing, and leave a little bit of white space on the bottom so that the city channel can go ahead and keep that. I'll tell you when to stop. Keep going, keep going down, other way, other way, please. Okay, let's, yeah, that's perfect. Thank you.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor.
You're welcome.
And so, we have $221.8 million at the start of the month and $228.4 million at the end of the month. And as the investment report showed, we categorize these, you know, by the different investment and cash account types. And then we have $17.2 million in receipts and $11 million in disbursements. As mentioned earlier, the increase in receipts is due to a VLF swap, so increased property tax due to the vehicle license fee swap. And then we also have $400,000 in adjustments, primarily due to revenues that are received in the Parks and Recreation Centers. And then, in terms of the general fund, we started with a beginning balance of $109.3 million, receipts of $16.7 million, disbursements of $8 million, and an ending balance of $117.7 million. And as a remark, just to note that this is measured on a cash basis, so this is based on when the city receives cash, receives funds from our, so this is based on when the city receives funds from a, receives its revenues, as well as when the city makes payments to staff for payable or to vendors for accounts payable. And then I'll be showing a second report. And so, I'm just going to quickly adjust the settings. And so, a second report shows revenues, expenditures, and fund balance. And so, the difference between this and the previous report is that this is measured on an accrual basis. As a result, the amount in fund balance does not mean that the fund has that much cash in the bank, right? So the previous report shows us how much cash that we have, but this does not show that. Instead, fund balance is assets, which includes cash, investments, as well as accounts receivable, minus liabilities, which includes accounts payable and unearned revenue. So fund balance is assets minus liabilities. And it is accumulated accumulated net resources in our fund. And so, the city's general fund ending fund balance was $106.8 million, increasing by $7.8 million from last month due to revenues of $12.1 million and expenditures of $4.3 million. And citywide, our ending fund balance was $213 million, increasing by $5.8 million from the previous month due to revenues of $12.9 million and expenditures of $7.2 million. And so, that concludes this presentation. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Thomas, and similar to our previous items, I'm going to go to our members of the public and basically provide a minute for people to raise hands if they'd like. Same with our blue cards, as well as emails to cityclerk@cubertino.org. So we'll just, we'll provide that time if people have questions on what they what they Okay, great. So we'll go on and return this to the dais, as well as to our councilmembers on Zoom. Yeah, I'll just start us off briefly. I'm going to go ahead and reiterate what I said previously. The monthly Treasurers' investment report was not provided on a monthly basis, as Thomas indicated it was quarterly. You know, similar to that one, this monthly Treasurers' report, I mean, I saw this as a two-pager. It still needs to be refined, but, you know, I personally, and I think people know that I'm not one to curry favor gratuitously, Councilmember Moore, thank you for holding up, you know, the various accounts payable. I mean, I think, you know, there are reasons to get attacked, and if you're going to get attacked for this, so that the work product ultimately ends up, you know, with this kind of clarity as to our financials, then, you know, I speak with the full force of my seven and a half years on council here and everything. And Madam City Clerk was pointing out, there were seven years before that on Parks and Recreation Commission, you know, but of course, we didn't get into the finances, as I was constantly reminded there to try to, you know, look at more of the granular details. But in any event, you know, I thought that was a great start. It was, you know, compared to what we were getting in terms of snapshots, you know, I think it speaks for itself, frankly. But did anyone have any comments or questions? Councilmember Moore, you have a head nod, I don't see hands from Zoom, so Councilmember Moore. So I'm sorry, I misspoke. Comments, let's save for after questions and requests for more material information. And then, after the request for material information and questions, we'll go ahead and entertain motions before we can, you know, get into that deliberative process. So any any questions and requests for further materials? Councilmember Moore?
And thank you again, Thomas, for the report. I'm wondering about the 22 million that's showing in the Park Dedication Special Revenue Fund, and so are are you indicating that that that, so where is that money sitting?
Thank you, Councilmember Moore. So that money is, yeah, sitting in a park dedication fund, and so that money is primarily, a large part of that is due to, I think approximately nine to 10 million that was received in December for the Westport project, so parkland dedication and fees for that project are a large part of that fund balance.
Okay, so my question is more, is where, in which account, if we were to look at it that way? So is it just a, is it a, is this just an earmarked amount? Or or is it sitting in a in a separate account somewhere?
In terms of bank accounts?
Yes.
It's not sitting in a separate bank account. So it is, the city pools its funds, so the city's funds would be either in, you know, the operating checking account or LEAF or the Chandler accounts.
Right, okay, thank you.
Yeah, the funds are earmarked.
Thank you. And one of the things that I'm that I'm hoping that that we that we get out of this, these exercises as we move forward is that members of the public who perhaps would be too timid to ask a question, because it looks really daunting with a lot of, a lot of acronyms that we're not necessarily familiar with, and there's a learning curve and requires some studying, that members of the public begin asking more questions about the money, because it is, it is the public's money, and and they have a right to to ask and and find out what's what's going on. I do have a question, it's kind of going a little bit off topic. When I go to the budget page, I see a development impact fee report, and I've been wondering how these fees are kept track of over time, because I see, for instance, a BMR housing mitigation fee. And and it's showing, their five-year report says that there was a incomplete project that was identified when imposing the fee of $160 million, and and then it shows the fund balance for the for the BMR fund of $6.1 million. So perhaps I can ask this this offline, but we do have, it's my understanding that we have a requirement that that we either spend this money within five years, or I believe have it designated to a project within within five years, and I don't know who on staff could answer that, but when I look at the report that you provided, it should be showing that that BMR housing. So you have the the BMR housing amount of $6.15 million, and then in the report, I'm seeing $6.11 fund balance from 2021. So I'm going to assume that there was probably some interest that was added, but is that, are you making some connection between these developer fee reports and making sure that that, because some of those, the fee reports, they designate the the funding to go to certain projects, and I'm wondering who's keeping track of all of all of that? For instance, in that Park Dedication Fund, some of that money is going to go to Lawrence Smitty because of agreements that have already been made, and then you have money from Westport. So that should, as we were told, go to the zone, the park zone around that area. So when I look at the 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 park fund in its totality, the 22 million, I can't tell, it doesn't tell me that that there's, that decisions have already been made for where it's going to to go. So where do I, where do I go to find out that that maybe 12 million, I believe, was for for Westport and about almost 9 million for from the Apple headquarters? That each one of those has a designation for what for where it's, where that funds, where those funds are going to go? Is that is that in the budget? Because I don't recall seeing it, but maybe there's another place I need to be looking.
Yeah, no, those are really good questions, Councilmember Moore, and I just maybe, before we hand it off to staff, I mean, just in the interest of some clarity, so we have a park dedication fee for developments. Westport had a fairly significant amount. That question of where that park dedication fee ends up going basically has never visited council. So I guess, you know, from a budgetary perspective, from a financial perspective, from the perspective of our processes, it would be good to kind of see how that gets allocated. So that's kind of an ongoing question, you know, as these things, you know, go, it's, you know, it's a push-pull of a communicative process, and if you're not getting into the details, you're just not even asking those questions in the first place. So, you know, with that context, let me just go ahead and bring this over to our city manager, because we did have that meeting last month, actually, before before the League of Cities in Sacramento, because I remember that was the last thing I did at City Hall before driving over. And And, and, and I think it was really edifying, right, to hear about the, you know, the allocation. And we have three different zones in, in the city where if a particular development happens to fall in that zone, then the investment of the park funds need to go into that zone. But as I said, I was on the Parks and Recreation Commission for seven years prior to getting on council. I had never even heard of that, right, during that time. And so maybe, you know, to Councilmember Moore's question, Jim, would you like to, you know, provide a little bit of that, you know, background information, you know, for the benefit of, you know, public consumption?
Okay, thank you, Meryl. I'll try my best. Excuse me, since that meeting that we had, Christina did go back and tell me that some time ago, and I don't remember the date, I don't know if you remember, Chris, that was when it was?
Several years ago.
Seven, seven?
Several years ago. I don't, I don't remember the exact date.
So several years ago, it went from a three-zone city to a one-zone city.
Oh, interesting.
So what that does is, does make it easier to move the use of the funds around. So it's just like you said before, the funds for Westport, if it was still the three zones, they would have to stay within that one zone. Lawrence Smithy would stay within the zone, the money would stay within whatever zones there. Now we have one zone that we can use the funds throughout the city. So the other part too is it sits in the fund for the park funds, say for the, the Westport. They don't get used until it comes to council. There's literally parked sitting there. So they're not allocated. We don't go in and say, use a hundred thousand here and so much over there. We have to come back to council to use those funds for, if it would be Memorial Park or the Lawrence Smithy Park or whatever the case might be, we'd have to come back and ask to use from those park fees.
Interesting.
The other one too is yes, there's a five-year report that is due, and these are a little different, AB-1600 and Quimby fees are a little different. Quimby's different from the AB-1600 versions, or similar, but some differences. AB-1600 is for pieces that are due to growth. So you added X amount of homes and the developer paid you, you go to expand a park. You can't fix a park, you can't make a better swing, you have to do something that expands it because you just have these homes added or whatever the case.
They want you to add acreage.
Exactly. With the Quimby one, you can actually go in and do enhancements to it and more, I would call it myself, just more of a maintaining, but taking a swing set that's there and making it a better swing set, not just the same swing set.
Do you happen to know which, which one applies to our park dedication fee? Is that Quimby Act?
Those are, from my understanding, they fall under the Quimby Act.
Okay. And so under the Quimby Act, we had three zones and now we have one zone? And we don't know precisely exactly when we, but, but, okay, I have a, just to sign post a follow-up question. I thought we had a city policy though, that basically said if it's in a particular area of the city, we try our best to apply those funds to that area, which is essentially why with the Apple Park money, right, we put it into Lawrence Smithy or whatever we're calling Lawrence Smithy right now. But you, you know, is there some explication on that point? Because it seems to be a bit of a moving target right now.
That one I'd have to just, because I don't know all the, I'm still learning policies, so I'd have to go back and, and ask staff for, unless, I don't know, Chris knows.
Yeah, I mean, I, I mean, I think those are questions that we could follow up on, you know, you know, probably outside of the meeting, just given sort of what's been noticed, but certainly questions we can follow up on.
It's our money, right? So at the end of the day, it's kind of like, it's kind of like the law is kind of infuses all, but, but point well taken. I mean, we do want to be able to, you know, be, be efficient about our time, but, okay. So, so let's take that as a follow-up point and, you know, one that, you know, obviously is, is well deserving of, you know, more scrutiny since we're, you know, kind of learning the process in, in concert with each other. So any other follow-ups at this point, Councilmember Moore, on this item number thirty? You know, with, you know, again, a repetition for, you know, shining some light on here. It's not easy to do. And, and again, kudos to our, our staff and, you know, for, for being able to, you know, deliver on this. I, I know, you know, you, you, you kick and pull and push and scream sometimes when, you know, there are these added requirements and kind of, you know, scratch your head and wonder, and then maybe you find some people within the public that really aren't looking at it that closely, you know, by even two or three percent. But then I think at moments like this, you realize what the value ultimately is of, you know, kind of getting through that. So Councilmember Moore, are there other follow-ups at this point before we go ahead and entertain a motion on item number thirty?
Yes, just a little bit, and I really, really appreciate the, the report. And I think as we move forward, we'll, we'll get a little more information. With regards to the, the fund names that we have, if we can have a, the definitions for, for each, an explanation of what they are for the public. And that can be a static item on the, on the webpage, which will explain what, and I think it is captured already within the budget because you have definitions for each one of these, these funds. For instance, one that, that I've wondered about is the Tree Fund, and I've been trying to locate what its purpose is without, without a lot of luck. And, and then I think, I think the public has been very curious about our enterprise funds and what the philosophy is on them. You know, are they, are they breaking even? Are they losing money? Is generally the, the question that people want to know, particularly with, since there was the Blackberry Farm Golf Course meeting this week, people want to know more about the finances there and, and why things are being done the way that they are. And resource recovery, a little more explanation for the public for, for what, for what that is as well. I think, I think all those would be really helpful education-wise so that rather than having this long glossary, I mean, you can do that if you want and include it in your staff report, but if there's just a link that can point the public to the definitions of each of these, I think that would be really beneficial moving forward so that everybody's able to participate in these discussions and, and, and feel like they, they also own this, the budget and the information too. I think, I think it'll really help. So thank you.
Okay, well, thank you very much, Councilmember Moore. At this point, let me ask you a follow-up question. Having gone through this for items twenty-nine, and now we're about to look at item thirty, I note that this parallels items thirty-one and thirty-two, whereas item twenty-nine was April Monthly Treasurer's Investment Report. Item thirty-one is the March Monthly Treasurer's Investment Report. And then item thirty-two is similar to item thirty in that that's actually the quarter ending March thirty-first for the investment report as opposed to, you know, the investment report for April two thousand and twenty-two. Would you like to move these three items in concert with each other right now is my question? Items thirty through thirty-two, as described in the agenda for the recommended action?
Yes, yes, Mayor Paul. Because we, I have already seen them. I think the members of the public understand from Thomas's report, the, the nature of the reporting that you're, that you would be receiving and then to move on with the meeting, I think that would be ideal.
Okay, excellent. So let's go ahead and take a second. Would anyone like to second Councilmember Moore's motion to move items thirty through thirty-two? Councilmember Willie is raising his hand, and so he seconds items thirty through thirty-two as recommended in the agenda. Let's go ahead and take a roll call vote. I don't see further hands raised or indicators. Items thirty through thirty-two, Madam City Clerk.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Wei?
Aye.
Councilmember Willie?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Chow?
Aye.
Mayor Paul?
Yes.
The motion carries unanimously.
Thank you very much, Madam City Clerk. A quick time check, we're at nine thirty-six. It looks like we have a couple of additional items. One more in consent calendar, that's the Memorial Park Pond item that has been pulled. Of course, item number thirty-seven is there as well. That's for the City Hall Annex at ten four fifty-five Torrey Avenue. And I believe we go to item thirty-nine tonight with the storm drain fee. Let's, let's just take these, you know, hopefully we can, we can get through these, but we've made some, I think, really good progress tonight. Let's take a few-minute break. It's nine thirty-seven right now. We'll come back at nine forty-one with item number thirty-six, which is the construction contract for the Memorial Park Ponds. Thanks, we'll see you at nine forty-one. Welcome back. We're going to go ahead and start up again with our meeting. This is item number thirty-six, that is to consider the award of a construction contract for the Memorial Park Ponds Repurposing Project, which is Project two thousand and twenty-two dash oh-three for removal of concrete ponds at Memorial Park, including associated demolition, grading, drainage, minor paving, landscaping, and irrigation facilities. Mr. City Manager, would you like to introduce the item or the person providing the presentation for this item?
Thank you, Mayor, I will. I'm going to introduce our newer Public Works Director, Matt Morley, who will then do the other introductions.
Great, thank you. Welcome, Matt. Director Morley, welcome.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor and Council. It's great to be with you tonight. This is a great project to move forward, previous council direction on the ponds. And here tonight to provide a report to you on that is our Assistant Director, Chad Mosley.
Okay, welcome, Assistant Director Mosley.
Yeah, I can provide kind of an update to the project, or I can go straight to answering any questions that the council may have. I'll leave that to, to you if you want me to go in having a presentation.
Oh, do you, do you have a presentation to provide, Chad?
We've got a brief presentation, and Ayano Hattori can help with that presentation, and I can answer any questions afterwards if that's how you'd like us to proceed.
Okay, why don't you provide that presentation? And then just, just in the ordering of things, we'll then go to our members of the public that have any comments, and then we'll bring you back to council for questions.
Very good. Ayano?
Aye, thank you. Let me share my screen. If somebody can confirm I have the right screen up? I think it's showing.
That's good.
Great. Good evening, councilmembers. Tonight, we're here to provide you an update on the city's Memorial Park Pond Repurposing Project. The project has been funded by City Council and was prioritized with the two thousand and twenty-one, twenty-two city work plan. The project is located at Memorial Park and consists of seventy-one thousand square feet of concrete-lined pond. The ponds have been drained of water since nineteen twenty thirteen in response to drought restrictions set by the state. The ponds have reached the end of their useful life and resulted in considerable water loss due to the conditions of the liner. The existing infrastructure cannot easily be rehabilitated and is in need of removal. The city had the area surveyed to facilitate the design of the project. Following slides will provide a brief overview of the proposed project. The city put the project out to bid, and the bid process closed on May twelfth. The low bidder for the project was Granite Rock Company and their bid of approximately one point three million dollars was in line with the projected project. The design consists of removal of the concrete liner, backfill of the excavation, and minor grading and drainage work. The area will be restored with vegetation and minor paving work to enable the public to reuse the area. The project was designed to minimize the need to remove improvements in the future. Much of the project consists of work that needs to happen no matter what the future improvements of the city considers. Approximately fifteen percent of the total project cost consists of landscaping and irrigation that may be adjusted or removed if the Memorial Park specific plan recommends different uses for this area in the future. The northern half of the site includes the pond area around the gazebo and the amphitheater. Restoration of the area consists of various asphalt paths and vegetation coverage. Area around the amphitheater will be restored with low ground coverage to help separate the staging area from the amphitheater seating. The city is installing asphalt paths around the back of the staging area and around the gazebo to provide better pedestrian connection. Much of the remaining pond area will be improved with turf to enable the public to reutilize the area. The southern portion of the pond area consists of the pond situated closest to Stevens Creek Boulevard and the rock channel adjacent to the playground. The rock channel area will be restored with drought-tolerant vegetation, and the southerly pond area will be restored with turf. Construction is anticipated to begin by the end of June. Thank you for your time, and we're here to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, great, thanks very much. And before we go to our members of the public, I just want to confirm that we'll have an update with that presentation to the city clerk's office sometime between now and tomorrow, correct?
Correct.
Yes, we can do that for you.
Okay, great, thanks so much. All right, so let's go to our members of the public. Same situation. I do see a hand raised. That is from Jean Bedord. And so we'll go ahead and go to the public. And the procedure is going to be have your hand raised in Zoom or the blue card filled out, or the email to cityclerk@cupertino.org. That is all one word, cityclerk, by the time that the first speaker is done speaking. And now we have an additional hand raised in Zoom from Susan Moore. Welcome, Jean Bedord. You'll have three minutes.
Good evening, Mayor Paul and councilmembers. My name is Jean Bedord, and I'm a longtime Cupertino resident. I am here to urge you to approve this construction contract to remove the concrete ponds from Memorial Park. These empty ponds have been an eyesore to the city since they were drained in two thousand and thirteen. That's nine years ago, and residents have been complaining ever since. I see these ponds when I go every time to the senior center, and the members are always asking, when is the city going to get its act together and do something about them? They don't want to wait for an implementation plan of a master plan, which is realistically at least two years out, and probably more like five to ten years. Regardless of what's eventually planned for this area, the basic prep work needs to be done on the pond. Better sooner than later since construction costs keep going up. Filling grass and vegetation over the infill area is a no-brainer so residents can have a more pleasant park experience. Currently, the ponds are also a safety hazard as well as an eyesore to residents and visitors, and they see it with every festival. It's particularly obvious then. It's time to move ahead and make the pond area usable to residents. Please approve this contract tonight. The residents will finally have a chance to enjoy Memorial Park. Thank you.
Thank you, Jean. Our next speaker is Susan Moore, and we also have a hand raised from Lisa Warren. Welcome, Susan.
Hi, it's Susan Moore, a longtime resident. So I was, I went to the Trey Blossom Festival with my dog, and we, we walked across, we got caught in the old pond here. I mean, I like, I'm seventy-five, so I feel it's kind of dangerous. I mean, I hate to say this, I don't want the, the, you know, the city to spend more money than it should, but I think you really need to look at this and do something. I don't know if it's the plan that the, that's been proposed, but I think it would be really better if, if this was taken care of. I think it's part of the whole plan in the long run. I mean, when you have even, you have things going on, you know, you have the Shakespeare Festival, you have the bands going on. I mean, to have that there and have people crossing that area, because that's what happens, it's not a good idea. I mean, you really have to be practical. So I, I think it would be time to do this. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Susan. And next we have Lisa Warren. Welcome, Lisa.
Thanks.
I, I think I might be competing with somebody who also has Zoom access. So I'm going to push the button for Lisa to talk.
I'm here.
Welcome, Lisa.
Am I here?
Welcome. We can hear you, yes.
I was talking. Okay, so it's good to hear that the, the bid came in, Granite Rock, at what was expected and not above, so that's good news. If that's money that's already been earmarked, we're not talking about a surprise, which is always a nice thing. I agree that it's going to take a long time to get the whole picture figured out. So whatever can be done to make it safer, more usable in the meantime, but not lot, waste a lot of resources, time, or money in doing something that would be more costly to change later. And it doesn't sound, the way this is described, it sounds reasonable, if not the best thing to do. I would, I heard said that ready to start at the end of June. It seems a shame to be doing, I'd like to know what that looks like and how that limits access to the rest of the park during the summer months when kids are out of school and people are more likely to use it. So it would be good to know that, if that timing is really appropriate. And maybe that's the only time Granite Rock can do it. I mean, but I just think it's worth asking about timing. Not to stall it for no reason, but to make it a graceful change and allow people to still use the park. and allow people to still use the park in the busiest time of the year. And so I think that's it. Thanks for the report, and thank you all.
Thank you, Lisa. So let's go ahead and follow up with staff before we start with Vice Mayor Chow, who pulled the item. So with regard to that follow-up on the scheduling of this, has there been consideration of the impacts to other activities in the park, given the proposed timetable for this work? So Chad, I see your microphone is off. Did you want to speak to that question?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. The reason the project is being proposed during the summer is due to the grading. We don't want to perform any work during the rainy season. And I know we haven't had a lot of rain this last year, but we still try and typically do these large grading projects during the summer where that impact is less likely to happen. You know, with respect to the activities within the park, the ponds will be fenced off so that basically it's only the area of activity. It should not limit access throughout the rest of the park. And we've also coordinated with the contractor to not be performing any work within the amphitheater area so that the summer sessions that occur at the amphitheater can continue. And once that summer session ends about the middle of August, they'll go in and complete that work around the amphitheater.
Okay, thank you very much. And let's go on to Vice Mayor Chow. Vice Mayor.
Yeah, thank you. So the reason I pulled this item is to clarify some information. I'm very glad to see that this design contract actually come under budget. I think the earlier estimate back in 2019 was $1.5 million, and that's an engineering estimate, given the rising cost of everything, and we have a bidder that's $1.3 million. That's really great to know. I thanks staff for the wonderful presentation with all the charts. However, those design is not part of this agenda item. And so that those design does not seem to be available in previous or posted on any city website. So I wonder where the public can find out the design of the pond that's going to be done by this design contract.
Okay, good, basic questions. Vice Mayor Chow and Chad, did you want to speak to that?
Yeah, so the bid documents are posted on the webpage, and those plans are within there. And there will be also a link on the Memorial Park website that goes to the plans.
The Memorial Park website?
So if you go to the Cupertino webpage, you go to Public Works, Capital Improvement Projects, and Memorial Park Ponds, there is a lot of information in that area, including the plans.
So when was the plan approved by the council?
The plan is not approved by the council. It's the contract being approved by council. The city engineer approves the plans.
So the contract we have on the agenda doesn't have any of the plans?
The bid documents that are on the webpage have the plans. Council is approving the contract to proceed with construction.
The bid document.
Let's do this. Sorry to interrupt, but I mean, this is actually a really important point. So Chad, I'm going to go ahead and share my screen. Let's navigate to this page together as to where you're indicating. So here, I'm sorry, I have some material to probably, I'm going to stop my share to make sure I'm sharing the right screen here. All right. So let's go ahead and, okay, City of Cupertino Safari agendas in minutes. Okay, so I'll go to the city homepage. Where do I go from here, Assistant Director Mosley, for finding this material you're talking about?
If you go to Public Works.
Okay. I want to do Public Works. So where is the Public Works tab here?
I'm sorry. Go to online, or our city.
Our city, okay.
Public Works, which is in the third column.
Okay, right here. Got it.
Yes, sir. If you look on the left-hand side, you'll see Capital Improvement Program Projects.
Okay.
As this is part of the CIP. Below that, you'll see Memorial Park Ponds Repurposing Project.
Got it. Okay, wonderful.
And this will be the website for the page, and if you scroll down to the third, the third pull-down.
This one, construction phase?
That's it.
Okay.
And right there, there's the bid documents, and the plans are within there. We're currently working on a conformed set which addresses some RFP, or I should say RFI, information with the contractor. Once we have that well, but for now, the plans are within that link.
Whoops. Okay, so you froze for a moment, but I'll take that to mean that this link will be updated. I tried to click on this, and it seems to be a link that doesn't start downloading a document, but I'm going to assume that that will be updated. And Chad, you just, you froze for maybe three or four seconds or so.
Yeah, sorry about that. Like I said, we're in the process of getting a conformed plan set, which will be used for construction. Once that is completed, which we're expecting within the next day or two, that'll also be posted on the webpage.
Got it. So if we want to see what the plan set looks like for this particular vendor, or the other bidders for that matter, we can see the design drawings that were put forward to the bidding process, right?
That's correct.
Okay. And you expect that to be active, or you thought it was active right now, but maybe it's a function of just, you know, my browser or whatever. But it should be available to the public, I'd say, by the end of the week, right?
I'll have it up tomorrow, if it's not working now.
Great. Okay, thanks, Chad. Vice Mayor, let's go back to you. I'm sorry for interrupting. Because it's just an important point, right? So we want to know what it looks like, yeah.
Yeah, thank you. That's great. And I think in the future, please include a link. It's great to know that it's online. Please include a link to the design document, whether it's in a bid or not. That should be part of the staff report, because the public would want to know what the design looks like. And it's great that your presentation has all that. And the reason I pulled this item mainly is, I'll share screen. From the adopted CIP plan that we have. This adopted CIP plan we have is budgeted at $3 million, and it does not include only the removal of the pond. It appears to include also some kind of replacement. So I'm a little confused with this current scope. So here is the page from the adopted CIP plan. Budget is $3 million. And then it says it's based on design studies completed in 2018. And I wasn't able to find the item. I emailed the staff, and then somewhere else it was mentioned there was a design completed in 2017, too. And the personal director actually sent me two conceptual designs for this pond. And but those, I'm told, were presented to the council, but they are not available online. And now I'm learning it's available in a bid, so I'm, so first question, is the design that's completed in 2018 the same as the design that's in the bid contract? Or is that, are they different?
I can speak to that. So the conceptual designs that were put together back in 2018 were kind of initial outreaches to the public regarding concepts for Memorial Park. The design that we see for the bid project are actually engineered design drawings, so they are not the same drawings. And the engineered design drawings work in concert with those conceptual drawings. We wanted to make sure that what we were putting in there was not going to be conflicting with those. And keep in mind, this project here is the bare minimum project we could do to remove the ponds and have the area be open for public use. We're trying to not do any extra work with this, other than just bring it up so that people can use it, because we know that the Memorial Park specific plan is coming, and that process is going to be starting very soon. And the public will have plenty of opportunities to provide input, and what comes of that specific plan may result in some changes in use in this area. So like I said, we did the very bare minimum just to bring the area back for public use.
Right. So there were two conceptual designs presented to the council, I believe, at that time. None was really approved, and now you have an engineering design based on a conceptual design, to which you're urging me to stop.
Again, I should state that the conceptual designs, well, I should state the conceptual designs were not approved, and so what we did is we created a design that did not conflict with those conceptual designs, right? All we're really doing with this project is removing the ponds, filling the hole with dirt, and putting in some turf and vegetation so that the public can begin to use this again. We're not doing any special designs, nothing above and beyond that. We're just trying to bring the area back to a condition that is aesthetically appealing and allows the public to reuse it. Those conceptual designs had enhanced amphitheaters, a lot of other stuff in there that we are not doing. We're removing the ponds, filling the hole.
I think this particular design doesn't include amphitheater. It's only the pond. But anyway, so you are saying the engineering design kind of did the minimum of both conceptual design? And then so that this current contract includes removing the pond, but also filling in dirt and installed turf, so it's at least pleasant.
That's exactly it. It's at least pleasant and usable.
And it's not $3 million. It's not $3 million, and you are able to do it with only $1.3 million?
That's correct.
Or is that the 1.3 a different scope? Or is it the same scope?
So the 1.3 is part of the 3 million, but that 3 million also includes design services as well as construction management services. We still anticipate the entire project coming in under $2 million. And again, part of that is because we went in there and we basically are doing just the bare minimum to open it, and we're trying to ensure that the improvements we're putting in there are, that any potential to have to modify those improvements or remove them in the future is reduced to the minimum amount possible.
Okay, now I'm a little confused. So we have this 1.3 million design contract. But wait, this one include the construction, right?
Correct. 1.3 is construction.
You expect the entire project to come in at $2 million? The remaining $0.7 million would be for what? That part I'm confused.
So the construction contract is about 1.5. Our design contract, and the design cost us about $40,000. And our construction management services for construction, we're still working out those details, but we're expecting it to be somewhere in the $80,000 range. So totally, we're probably going to come up with about $1.7 million, $1.8 million to finish this project. The remaining $1.2 would go back to the general fund or to the capital reserve. I would let the finance manager tell me where that goes. But our goal is to, like I said, give as much money back as we can. We're trying to come in way under budget, and we're doing a really good job with this one.
Okay, great. So for this $3 million budget, you are finishing everything that specified in the scope, but only going to be $1.7 million?
Yeah, don't quote me on the $1.7, but somewhere in that range, yeah.
Thank you.
We're doing, we're, again, our goal is to, you know, be efficient with taxpayer dollars. And we designed this for the maximum efficiency possible to remove the eyesore of the ponds and bring this area back up to something that can be utilized until the citizens come up with what they really want to do in this area with the master plan that's coming along.
Okay.
Thank you so much for the clarification.
Great. Thank you, Vice Mayor. Thank you, Chad. So we're going to go ahead and, I actually saw Councilmember Way's hand first before I saw Councilmember Moore's, so let's go to Councilmember Way, followed by Councilmember Moore. And again, this is questions and requests for materials and information before we entertain a motion on this.
Right. Thank you, Mayor Paul. So further, I want to say, this is what I understand it. What 90% or 85%, what needs to be done, needs to be done anyway. Doesn't matter what a specific plan comes up. That's the basic, what needs to be done to remove the concrete and everything. Is that correct?
That is correct. 85% would have to happen no matter what we did. The final 15% that could be modified consists of turf and some irrigation work.
Okay.
You know, if we decide.
Right, sorry. Go ahead.
If we decided to put in a building or something, we would have to remove the turf, and we may need to modify some of the irrigation work. But everything else was the same.
Right. It has to be done anyway. So I do like it because doing now probably would save some construction later on in the years, two or three years, if the specific plan comes along. And the other point you made is, whatever you do, you try to not minimize, try to not conflict with whatever plan that had been studied so that we could save money when we have that specific plan planned, right?
That's correct. Like you said, this was designed to ensure that we were just basically creating a blank slate for whatever comes in the future.
Okay. And in the meantime, after this is done, can I know how long would this take? Six months?
The construction of this work here should be done. The contract says October 1st of this year. And we're hoping to, you know, keep this project both on time and within budget, so we're going to work hard to do that.
After that, you know, we can, everybody can enjoy it until a specific master plan can be made, designed, and redo it. Basically, that's what the whole concept is, right?
That is correct. That is correct.
Thank you.
And again, I must, you know, when I state October 1st, that includes us providing a notice to proceed to the contractor within the next few days. You know, that results in this contract needing to be approved tonight, and we've got to do a bunch of work in the next few days to ensure that we can do that. It may not be October 1st. It may be a little later in the month, but we're shooting for October 1st.
Right. So that's an estimate. So I think a lot of residents would be very happy. For safety, for utility, and for the next couple of years, at least, we can enjoy this pretty big area. So thanks, Chad.
Thank you, Councilmember Way. Next, we have Councilmember Moore.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor Paul. I was wondering if you could navigate back to that, the page showing the Memorial Park Pond Repurposing Project.
The Capital Improvement Projects Public Works page, sure. Let me see if I can try to do that.
And then, just out of curiosity, I was wondering, who did the engineer's estimate calculation? Was that a consultant or staff?
That was our engineering consultant who did the design, prepared the engineer's estimate.
Okay, thank you. Mayor Paul, are you able to zoom in on that lantern?
Zoom in on the lantern?
Yeah, are you able to zoom in at all?
I'll do my best. You know, this is a little bit more versed in doing this on a PC, but yeah.
So my question is, will the, I want to know what the history is of on the lantern and.
Oh, this guy here?
Yes, and how is it going to be?
Oh, I think that was a gift from Toya Kawa.
Yeah, yeah. And so...
And I can confirm that was a gift from Toyokawa. And the engineered plans require the contractor to salvage that statue. And we will be filling this particular area with drought tolerant vegetation and will be replacing the statue back where it is.
Okay, excellent. That's, I wanted to make sure of that. And then possibly, if there could be, if there isn't a informational plaque next to it, if you would consider providing some information on the history of it? Because I'm able to zoom in on it on my screen. And I want to make sure that it's protected so that it doesn't get harmed because you're now not going to have the, what used to be essentially water all around it protecting it. So I want to make sure that it's still in a safe location because it looks very, very nicely made. And if, like I said, if you could provide some information for the public, a little placard, something that can withstand the sun being on it. I think that would be really, really very nice, but...
Well, I can state that in this area, again, we're putting in some ground cover, drought tolerant. It's not going to be turf where people can come right up to it. Not that you can't walk through that vegetation, but it's going to kind of insinuate that it's an area to stay out of. We do have a plaque for both of these. There's two of these statues at Memorial Park. The other one, where you do have access to walk right up to it, has a plaque on it. And I think we can probably look to see about putting one here as well. But there is a plaque that does talk about at Memorial Park already.
Okay, thank you. So if there's some way that both of them could coordinate? So if one, if the existing one is kind of old and needs to be updated or you can't match it, or, you know, whatever your landscape designer has decided about that, if there's a nice way to have them coordinate, that would be great. I have a question for our attorney. So when we make a motion for this item, do we need to find the project as exempt from CEQA and then make the recommended action to award a construction contract for Memorial Park's Pond Repurposing Project, authorizing the city manager to execute the contract in the amount of $1,324,207 with Granite Rock Company and authorize the Director of Public Works to execute any necessary change orders up to the construction contingency amount of $132,420.70, 10% of the contract amount for a total authorized contract amount of $1,456,627.70. Would that be the appropriate motion? Or do we strike the exempt from CEQA portion?
Yeah, I believe that is appropriate. And the project is exempt from CEQA as, you know, maintenance of an existing facility. That's correct.
Okay. Thank you. So I don't know if we are ready to make a motion, but that would be my motion if we are.
Okay. Would anyone like to second Councilmember Moore's motion? Vice Mayor Chow, your hand is raised. Would you like to second that motion?
Happy to second, but I do have more question.
Okay. So let's put the motion on the table. Please follow up with your questions and then we'll proceed into deliberation. Vice Mayor, actually, let me, I'm sorry, let me check in with Councilmember Willie. Did you have anything, Councilmember Willie, for?
I did have a couple of questions, but I did have a couple of questions. Is this the appropriate time?
Yeah, let's let you ask your questions before we go back to Vice Mayor.
Yeah, so the questions are kind of for Chad. If he could pop back up Ayano's presentation where she showed the top view of the pond area. I think, you know, I agree with the questions that have been asked. Trying to understand, you know, really the overall project that's going to be done. And the picture that you shared was very helpful. But I think the larger Memorial Park plan view would really help.
I guess that was a request from our member of staff. Ayano, if you could share your presentation again with the screen, we'd appreciate it. I think it was probably one of the aerial views that Councilmember Willie is referring to.
Okay, just a moment.
Great, thank you.
Is it this one?
Not quite up yet. And there it is. Yeah, perfect. So then the question, I think, is back to Chad. So in the screenshot that Vice Mayor Chow showed us and also in the verbiage of the presentation, I think I heard 71,000 square feet, but then in the screen capture that Vice Mayor showed us, 61,000 square feet. So I'm thinking this area in blue is the 61 or 71,000 square feet. Maybe to kind of give us an understanding, if you could kind of point out what is going to be grass, extended grass area versus what's going to be the drought tolerant vegetation? Excuse me.
I'm going to ask Ayano to scroll down a couple of slides. Going, keep going.
Oh, there you go. Okay.
Keep going. One more. Right there. You can see the dotted area. It's got, I think, little crosses on it, but it may be difficult to see. But the dotted areas will be turf. The areas that are a little darker there will be drought tolerant vegetation and low ground cover. Basically, all the low ground cover is drought tolerant vegetation. So you can see kind of around the theater will have drought tolerant vegetation. And then again, down towards the bottom part of this page, we're going to have some additional drought tolerant vegetation. And this is the area that pagoda is low now and will be replaced. And if we scroll down a couple more slides, again, on this one, you see the dotted area kind of on the, towards the bottom of the page, shaped kind of like an L. That's going to be turf. And then the rest of the areas will be drought tolerant vegetation.
Great. I think that really speaks to what, you know, we've been kind of trying to get to. What should the community be expecting to see, you know, in October? And if you back up to the previous slide that was showing the large parcel of turf? Yeah, there you go. Whoop, too far.
I'm sorry.
Yeah. Because, you know, Memorial Park is our flagship park. You know, I correlated to San Francisco's Golden Gate Park. And when you go to Golden Gate Park, you see people picnicking everywhere. The grass has got people everywhere. And everybody likes to have a little space, space for their dogs, space for their, to throw their frisbees. And so that's kind of where drought tolerant shrubs, indicators that people shouldn't be going in those areas. But this really kind of, I think, sets the stage that there's going to be a lot of green area that they can go and throw down their blankets and, you know, have their family spread out. Great. The question then comes in, you know, somewhere, you know, 61,000 square feet, that's like 1.4 acres. So now the water consumption is the next issue. You know, are we prepared for the water consumption? I mean, definitely, I'm a supporter of it because that's what makes it usable to the community that after over two years of pandemic, getting out and being able to be active. Can you kind of speak a little bit to how that's going to play out now?
Yes. So we will have irrigation in this area to serve the lawn. We will basically water this turf area the same as we would, as we water our other turf areas, which are currently at, you know, typically a 30% lower than usual. That being stated, this design here still uses about, maybe a third of the water use that the old ponds used on an annual basis, potentially even less than that. I don't have exact infiltration rates that the old pond had due to the cracks in the lining. But we are, even with this design, will be using considerably less water than what was used prior to the ponds being drained. And again, we will be treating this turf area like we do the rest of our turf areas. And we did try and enhance as many areas as we could that seemed to make sense with drought tolerant vegetation to further reduce water use.
Sounds good. Thank you. I think that really kind of sets the stage. You know, it's not real visible, visual in terms of knowing, but it really does, I think, go quite a ways to tell us that Memorial Park is going to be back to being an active place for people to enjoy. So it'll start in June. The, again, what Vice Mayor Chow put up there, it said it would be phased in. And so you had mentioned that around the amphitheater, it was going to be kept as is for the least part of the summer for the concert series and things. But the rest of that, you know, will be, you know, to rip out the ponds, put in the plumbing. Are you going to be putting in sod or seeding it and then having to wait for it to grow?
I believe it's sod, but I'd have to check the contract documents on that.
Yeah, if you could, because that, to me, would be a pretty big indicator. Or maybe you tell me, how long does it take to grow seed versus sod? It's there in a couple of days or a couple of weeks to take root. But seed, I mean, boy, that can be a while.
Yeah, just verified it's sod.
Great. Excellent. Thank you. So happy to hear this. And I'm very anxious to see the Memorial Park back in operation. Thank you.
Great. So we'll go to, back to Vice Mayor Chow and then Councilmember Moore, hands to hand raised. I'll remind everyone, we do have a motion. Councilmember Moore added the CEQA exemption language to the recommended action on the consent calendar item number 36. So Vice Mayor Chow? And then after Councilmember Moore, we'll go back to Councilmember Way as well.
So regarding the lantern, I mean, of course, we are going to do a Memorial Park master plan, hopefully within one year. That was the original projection back in 2019, but I guess COVID stopped it. Now, if we are going to do different things, could those lanterns and other objects be relocated when we do?
Yeah, with the master plan, people can provide inputs and whatever future design or recommendations come from that process, yeah, those can be located. I don't see why not. That was not the intent with this project.
Then maybe we should include lantern and other objects in part of the plan, where we should locate them. And maybe we should not be adding plaque at this time since it might be coming different format. I think we should do the very minimum right now. And then another question is regarding the parking at Memorial Park. Will this project be taking up any of the parking space at Memorial Park Parking or Senior Center?
There may be at times during the summer where there may need to be some staging that has to happen in a parking area to minimize those impacts. We're hoping that all of the staging, or at least the vast majority of the staging, can happen within the construction fencing, which is enclosing the pond area.
I think the reason is Sunday Farmer's Market. We are close to figuring out a plan with the DHA hopefully by the end of June, but that's not 100% yet. So I'm just wondering, in just in case that they didn't finish the agreement by the end of June, what would be the impact on the Farmer's Market?
Again, we would try and minimize impacts to the Farmer's Market. Most likely, if there was any parking spaces that were requested by the contractor, we potentially situate them over by Quinlan because that seems to be closer to the access points that would be utilized.
Okay, that would make sense. Thank you. And then I have a request that could you add the very wonderful presentation we have today to the CIP page that's shown? And also note the council meeting date so that if people want to hear the presentation, they can. And also that it has been, my understanding is there were two conceptual design of the pond back in 2018. And three conceptual plans were presented to the Pakistan Rec Commission, now the City Council, back in 2018 also. But then they are not, it's very hard to find them. I cannot find them. You have to go through their agenda. Ideally, we should have a page that document the different pieces of the Memorial Park in chronological order so that we, they are easily accessible. Not that, okay, this is under CIP, it's only under CIP. This is under Pakistan Rec, master plan is under Pakistan Rec. So if we can have all the Memorial Park pieces chronologically arranged and all the previous plans, whether it's presented at a public meeting that we had, they should all be listed. Then that would be really great. I think we have this wonderful page that I found out for the Civic Center Plaza project. I hope that a similar page could be created. Yeah, thank you so much.
Okay, thank you, Vice Mayor. Next, we have Councilmember Moore. Councilmember Moore?
All right. Thank you, Mayor Paul. I did find this waymarking.com website, which shows the Memorial Park lantern and the plaque that's there, which is kind of interesting. What I didn't see, maybe because we went through the plan set fairly quickly, was showing on the plans the location of the existing lanterns and how they're going to be returned in place or if they're going to be relocated a little bit. But I was wondering, Chad, if you could locate the two lanterns on the plans? Because I don't want to, for this to be lost in the process or broken. And the description says the lantern was given by the city of Toyokawa, Japan, to its sister city of Cupertino, California. The gift was given in 1988. And let's see. And the plaques, it is actually quite worn. It might be able to, you might be able to salvage it, bring it up to date. But it says Cupertino City and Toyokawa City commemorating the 10th year anniversary of Cupertino and Toyokawa sister city relations, presented in 1988 from the city of Toyokawa. So I was wondering if you could locate on the plan set those lanterns, just to be sure.
Yeah. And so if you look here on this page, towards the lower, let's call it amoeba for the plan.
Okay.
Right in the middle there, you can see that reference. It's hard, it's hard to see, but that is...
Yeah, that's the problem is I can't, I can't read it to know. And I just want to make sure that it's, that the contractor is well aware that these...
The contractor, yeah. The contractor is well aware there's a note indicating that they're to salvage it. We will have our grounds maintenance guys out there during the salvaging process. The second pagoda is within the construction zone. It's to the north of the gazebo, probably about 100 feet or so.
Okay.
So it should not be affected by construction.
Okay. Excellent. All right. Thank you. I just wanted to make sure of that.
Great. Okay. Next, we have Councilmember Way. And just a quick note before we go to Councilmember Way. I'm assuming that someone's consulted with the sister city committee on these items. And if not, maybe an outreach would be in order with regard to, at least notification that we're removing them. Maybe they have some insights into some requirements for that process. Has anyone reached out to the sister city? for that process. Has anyone reached out to the Sister City Committee from our staff?
No, nobody has. Our grounds maintenance guys already maintain these facilities. They're aware of what, you know, how to manage and handle these. And again, we're just going to be relocating this one during construction, and once construction is done, we're going to be putting it back.
And where are we putting it?
To this exact location.
Yeah, thanks. Where are we putting it during the relocation? Are we putting in the corporation yard or elsewhere?
We'll probably take it to the corporation yard, is my guess, unless the contractor can assure us he can find a place on site that is going to be safe. But my guess is we'll just take it to the corporation yard where we know, and our staff can ensure it remains safe.
Okay. Any timetable for when within this period of 110 days the removal will take place, or is that one of the things that will be done first before that period of time even starts?
We don't have a complete schedule from the contractor, but we'll be pushing it this be one of the first things that is done, because we just don't want heavy equipment around that. We want to remove it, get it out of there before the heavy equipment comes in.
Okay, great. Thanks. Councilmember Way?
Thank you, Mayor Paul. This is going to be quick. First, I want to commend the staff for really knowing the details, and then I'm pretty sure they're going to keep the lanterns safe. And when we do the design, I think that's when I think the Sister City will really be consulted. The second one actually is to follow with Councilmember Moore's question for Chris, for our attorney. I know we, Councilmember Moore actually asked if, if I interpret correctly, do we need that CEQA sentencing there or not? Because it's not in the original language, so just for my own reference in the future, do we need that CEQA in it, or it's not necessary? This is more for attorney question.
Yeah, it's, you know, it is optional. There are no findings that are required to, when you have a project that's exempt from CEQA, it can just sort of help clarify the basis for the decision-making and improve transparency, but it is optional.
Okay, thank you. So there's nothing wrong with the staff putting it this way, right? Either, right?
Yeah, as I said, right, as I said, it is total, it is optional from a legal standpoint. There's no requirement to make findings.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, totally nice to have. So Vice Mayor Chow, your hand is raised again, but I'm going to go ahead and ask that we make this follow-on brief. And before you make your comments, I'm going to go ahead and just say that I was very much in support of this when I submitted my capital improvement project, you know, ratings. I went ahead and made some annotations on some of these items, and, you know, this was actually a fairly faithful rendering of what I was recommending, which is basically, you know, look, these ponds have been out for a while, and whatever we do for the Memorial Park Master Plan, we should be trying to make this space available earlier and keeping our options open for the master plan process. So I'm in full support of what is being recommended here. And my question, however, is with regard to one of the points that was raised earlier on a prior item on financial matters. So what pot of funding is this coming out of right now? Is this just basically, you know, which one of the funds? Is this generated by any ARPA funding or any of our park dedication fee? Is that, you know, what pot of funding are we looking at here?
Well, it should be out of our CIP fund, but I'm going to go to Christina.
CIP? Okay, let's, yeah. So either, I guess Director Alfaro, or perhaps Director Morley, you know, one of the Public Works people. So Christina, do you happen to know how this is being funded here?
I believe it is, I'm sorry, did I unmute myself?
No, you're...
I believe, I believe it is the, I'm sorry, I'm trying to pull up the staff report, because I know we had a fiscal impact section on this, just very quickly, so I can verify. I believe it is our capital fund, so it would have been paid out of the capital reserve.
Okay, yeah, I can pull the staff report fairly quickly here, too. Yeah, actually, I scrolled through quite a bit of this a moment ago.
And if I recall, I think, I believe there was 2 million from CIP funds, and I think there was 1 million allocated from the park in lieu fund, if I recall correctly.
Got it. Okay.
Yes. I was going to say, it looks like it is using Fund 280, which means it has some special revenue attached to it.
Budget unit 420-99-248. City Council approved a fund of 3. Unencumbered would be approximately 2.4. Okay. So 2 million from CIP and 1 from the park dedication fee. So is there an allocation that this was coming out of? Was this, you know, was there a particular project considered the genesis, or is this just one fund that we treat as, you know, kind of a cohesive, you know, funding pot?
This, yeah, this is one fund that's kind of a cohesive funding pot that council approves use for. And this was, the 1 million from the park dedication fund was approved by council with the action last year.
Okay. So that was part of our, where does that breakdown come in? Because I'm not seeing it in the, in this current staff report. Is that part of the CIP process in terms of, because I don't remember that being a separate column in any table where we're talking about the various funds that the allocations come from with regard to whether it's coming out of CIP or coming out of something else.
I think, I think it was indicated in the CIP budgets and also with the annual budget process.
Okay. Well, I guess we can get into that later in terms of, you know, when we have these, you know, financial tables, or where within these, and it might not even be consistent, frankly. But I think it would be good follow-up to identify where we had that, just for clarity of, you know, understanding our financials here. So, okay, well, great. So let's go to Vice Mayor Chow. And Vice Mayor Chow, hopefully, we have brief follow-ups. I'll remind everyone that we do have a couple of items left, including 10455 Torrey Avenue, and we have, I believe it was item number 39 remaining with regard to the clean water and storm protection fee on the storm drainage issue. So Vice Mayor Chow?
So a question and a request that I think is sort of important. So the question is, the adopted CIP plan of this year does say 1 million will come from park dedication fund, but we just approved the Westport project. I think they paid the park fee already. So doesn't that mean we could have 2 million maybe from the park dedication fund to fully fund this?
Let's go ahead. I see our city manager is indicating...
Thank you, Mayor. No, we have different pots of money, as people like to say. So some of it could have come from the park dedication fees, it could come from the CIP reserve, it could come from general fund reserves, but I believe from what was approved, some, you know, 2 million came, excuse me, from the CIP, and 1 million was from the park.
I guess if I'm understanding the question, and the intent of the question for Vice Mayor Chow, maybe, maybe the thinking is, we have a bunch of money from Westport, basically. Can we basically pull all this from the Westport, you know, the park dedication fee? And then I guess, you know, just taking a step, you know, further, free up a little bit for the CIPs, you know, is that something that we would be able to do, or is that...
It would be, thank you, Mayor. It would be able to be done, but we'd have to come back, because this was approved before, we'd have to come back with appropriate, you know, another agenda item asking for appropriation from those rather than where it was approved before.
Okay. So this is, this is coming from a financial perspective and a noticing perspective, I take it? I mean, if we were basically just to say right now, well, why don't you just do this reallocation?
Right, we'd have to, it's not...
We probably couldn't do that, right?
You couldn't do that right now. You know, we'd have to come back.
Okay.
All right. Vice Mayor, anything else?
So, and the staff report actually says it's under fiscal impact. Fiscal year 2020-2023 CIP budget includes this parks recreation repurposing project, but we don't have approved the 2022-2023 CIP project. So this here, I'm guessing you are referring to actually 2122 project, and therefore, we cannot change that. But then we could likely change it in the 2223 CIP plan, which we have not adopted yet.
Did you want to speak to that, Jim?
Right. So again, to change what we have tonight, we'd have to come back again with a different accounting source.
But the staff report here actually should refer to 2122 CIP, right? Okay, never mind.
Yeah, no, I think that's a good question, Council, Vice Mayor Chow. So let me, yeah, I apologize. I actually had jumped ahead in my kind of looking on this to the next item. So going to the fiscal impact, next budget includes, so go ahead.
Staff, it's great with having your laptop up here. Staff was just sending me, said the fiscal year 2021-22, the CIP budget for the Memorial Park specific plan is included in budget unit 280-99-255. Approved funds were adequate to cover the cost of this contract, and no budget adjustment is required at this time.
Okay. So that's good, that's good additional information to have on top of what the, okay, so let's, maybe we can commit that to a memorialization. It's probably a good piece of information to have, frankly, under that fiscal impact section. So I don't know how we would go about it. I mean, any suggestions, I mean, updated, I guess amended materials after the, right. So let me, let me just share my screen here. Try to figure out where we are. Okay, so here we go. Share screen on this guy here. So, so basically, what Vice Mayor is pointing out, right here, when we go to fiscal impact, it talks about the next year's, you know, budget. But it doesn't really talk about what Jim just indicated, which is that our current fiscal year budget is sufficient to capture this. So is there anything that we can do to kind of indicate to the public after this meeting in supplementation to this information here, what Jim just indicated? So the budget unit is exactly this, except it's 255 instead of 254.
Yeah, I mean, perhaps we could request that the city clerk capture that in the minutes. That would...
Oh, well, I guess that would, it wouldn't necessarily be directly associated with the materials on this meeting, but I guess, is that...
We have discussed it now, so...
Yeah, it is recorded, is discussed if it's in the minutes, that's true. So, okay. All right. So Director Morley, you have your hand up. Did you want to speak to any of the discussion points here?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to clarify that we can, we can update the project page to reflect the funding source. The funding was available in 2122, and we, actually will be available in 2223 when you finish that budget, so that we could have been, we could have explained that in the fiscal impact section. We'll also adjust that fiscal impact section in the future to provide a little bit more detail on the funds, so that it's a little bit easier to track for you.
Yeah, wonderful. Thank you. Vice Mayor, your hand is still up. Did you want to make any...
Yeah, I said I have a request. So I understand the staff is doing the design, or maybe have already done the design for the amphitheater part. I think we should consider including the lanterns in that design, and then I would like that design to be brought to the council before it's sent out for bidding. Thank you.
You're saying the amphitheater, right, Vice Mayor?
Amphitheater, yes.
Okay. And what was your...
That's also in this year's adopted plan, and we have not seen any design.
Well, okay, what was your comment about the lanterns?
We can include the interns in the amphitheater design, maybe?
Okay, is that an issue at all? Are either of those points an issue with Public Works or City Manager's Office? Chad, you have your, as was Matt.
Those, those would happen with future projects, and they could either be reviewed with the amphitheater plans or with the Memorial Park specific plan when that comes through.
Okay.
Yes, we can, we can take that recommendation to heart and see what can happen with that.
I guess get a little bit of more near-term clarity on it. Okay, well, Vice Mayor, you have a commitment in our public session to follow up on that assiduously and promptly. So, okay, so let's go ahead and vote on this motion that's on the table. Not yet. Okay, so Councilmember Moore has a commenter, a deliberation point on this. So again, to remind everyone, the recommended action is on the table as a motion, including language that the project is exempt from CEQA as set forth by Councilmember Moore and seconded by someone, remind me, who's, I think it was Vice Mayor Chow, or was it Councilmember Willie?
Vice Mayor Chow.
Vice Mayor Chow, okay. Councilmember Moore?
Okay, thank you. I was wondering if, Mayor, if you're able to pull up the, go to the budget page for Cupertino and the CIP budget for 2122?
You want me to go to the Cupertino website? Is that what you're saying, or?
Yeah, I would just Google Cupertino budget, and it'll take you to the budget page document. And if, if staff could remind me where the funding is coming from, because I'm not seeing consistency.
So just to be clear about your question, Councilmember Moore, you're asking for the prospective proposed budget to be pulled up?
It's the, if you scroll down to Capital Improvement Program Budget for 2021 to 22, and then...
I see what you're saying.
85-page document, you scroll down to Funding Summary page...
Sorry, can you refer to your screen here? So I'm on the budget page.
Scroll, yes. Just simply scroll down on the page, and you'll get to, there you go, CIP Program Budget 2122, PDF 12. You can zoom in on that. Memorial Park Pond Repurposing, Funding Type, General Fund, and Park Dedication Fund.
You're talking about this page here?
PDF 12. Yeah, you can, it comes actually one after Amphitheater, the Amphitheater improvements. It becomes, come, you, yeah, you're at the ponds right next to it. Yep, there you go. And Budget Impacts. So here, they're asking this 1 million of park dedication funds in lieu of fees for the project. There's another page where they reference the funding for it.
I'm not, I'm not seeing where you're talking about here.
Under Budget Notes.
Okay, so...
Bold, yeah. We are asking...
2.3, Proposed 22 Budget is 3.4. In order to move this quickly, we're asking that council approve 1 million of park dedication. That seems to be consistent with what staff was representing.
Okay, now if you go back, if you go back to, it's PDF 12, Roman numeral 11, at little X, little I up top.
Yeah, I mean, I don't have this downloaded as a PDF, so...
Okay, oh, okay.
What page on the document itself?
Roman numeral, it's at the introduction area, so Roman numeral, you're almost there, right there. Okay, so here, scrolling up some more, you're at Roman numeral 12, so we need to go to 11, up, next, next page up. Okay, stop right there. Thank you so much. Memorial Park Pond Repurposing, Funding Type, General Fund, and PD is your Park Dedication Fund.
I forgot how to do this. Okay, so where are we here?
Park Repurposing, General Fund, and...
What line do you want?
Park Dedication. It's Memorial, there's a batch in Category 1 that says Memorial Park, and it's the middle one.
All right, Pond Repurposing, okay. So you want just to scroll over.
So if you go to Funding Type, it'll tell you what fund, what the, how they are funding it. And there, the first column there is telling you it's the General Fund and the Park Dedication Fee in lieu of...
I think following it, this is 3 million here, right?
Correct. Right, right. So your first, your first column on the left is your Funding Type. So it's not saying...
GFPD.
It's saying, it's saying General Fund. So I'd like to have that explained, because I'm seeing, I'm hearing the capital improvement, which is a fund that we have in our...
Well, there's no CIP acronym, right?
Right. And there is a fund, as you saw when we were looking at the budget earlier when Thomas was going over the fund balances. So you have a CIP fund balance, you also have a General Fund fund balance, and you have a Park Dedication, the 22 million. So...
And there's also no allocation here, right, between the General Fund and the Park Dedication Fee that's indicated. But, but in the pages that we're just at, it does say, okay. All right. So I guess the fundamental question here is basically, this says it's coming out of the General Fund. Is that consistent with the statement that this came out of Capital Improvement Projects Fund? So is there, hold on, let me get to the panelists here, or to Jim. So... So so.
Actually, I'm gonna go ahead and turn this back over to our our Administrative Services Director.
Okay, great. Christina, welcome back.
Thank you, Mayor. So, yeah, so the way the capital reserve is funded is through general fund transfer. So when CIP shows it as a general fund, it really, everything in the capital reserve is funded by the general fund. They're they're in, we push the dollars over there so they can be dedicated and used in CIP, but it is really, it fully comes from the general fund.
Okay, well, I I think that's kind of probably a longer term, broader discussion at this point. So so let's, I mean, let's just agree to have that discussion on, okay, let's just have that discussion on an ongoing basis. But but point taken. I mean, it's characterized as general fund here. Maybe we need to shore up some processes, but you know, I think that's beyond the scope of the purview of our our discussion at the moment. So Vice Mayor, your hand is no longer raised. I, you know, I don't want to get into, you know, all these various collateral, but very important discussions, certainly. But we we have, you know, this project, it's on the table. The default motion is basically there with a recommended action in addition to the CEQA language. Madam City Clerk, could you please conduct the roll call vote on item number thirty six?
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Wei?
Aye.
Councilmember Willie?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Chow? Was that an aye?
Aye.
Thank you. Mayor Paul?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Okay, great. So we're on to, I think, our last item of the evening, probably. We only have about an hour left. I'm gonna go ahead and have us take a break and come back at eleven o'clock. My expectation is that we're not going to get to both of items number thirty seven and thirty nine. So item thirty seven is ten four fifty five Torrey Avenue. So we'll start with that when we get back. So we'll see you at eleven. Thanks. Session that's agendized as item thirty seven. The subject is a study session in consideration of design professional services agreement between the city of Cupertino and Dialogue Design LLP for the City Hall Annex at ten four fifty five Torrey Avenue. And Mr. City Manager, did you want to introduce the item or provide a presentation?
Oh, okay, thank you, Mayor. I'm gonna go ahead and once more, turn it over to our Public Works Director, Matt Morley.
Okay, and also looks like Susan Michael has a camera on. So Director Morley, welcome back.
Thank you very much. And yes, this is a project that you've been waiting to see, and Susan Michael has a great presentation for you.
Wonderful. Welcome, Susan.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. Let me share my screen. There we go. Hopefully you can see that.
We can, yes.
So good evening, Council and members of the public. I am Susan Michael, CIP manager. We have a short presentation on the status of the City Hall Annex CIP project at one zero four five five Torrey Avenue. There we go. So the agenda for tonight is first that we'll start with the goals of the project, and then go into some background information, review the current financial status, and end by listing the next steps for the project, as well as reviewing the action items that are, we are asking Council to consider tonight. Project goals. The property was purchased in April twenty twenty one and approved as a CIP project in June of that year for the CIP program. It was also included in the fiscal year twenty two city work program. This is the page from the CIP presentation to Council about the project. Program plan and building facility improvements required for interim facility to accommodate staff while city halls remodeled, as well as the long term use of this facility. The scope of work will include programming, planning, design, and construction. To expand upon the project narrative that we just read, the project goals are to pursue an open plan. This allows for the greatest flexibility for future uses as yet to be determined. Think of it as a well lit, adaptable, energy efficient white box. We will program, design, and construct improvements that are required for an interim facility to accommodate city hall staff, including housing a temporary EOC and the video division. Bringing the building into code compliance is a priority. This includes ADA accessibility, HVAC upgrades, new energy efficient windows, wired for networking, et cetera. And sustainability is a priority. Improving the energy efficiency of the building is a must have. A little bit of background on the project. This floor plan, this is the current floor plan. And it shows, this is, we said it's up fifty six hundred square feet, and it has nineteen offices presently. And they're pretty small or midsize. Put the dimension on here, just so you could read it a little better, just to get a sense of the scale.
Just just so you know, Susan, the the caption on the bottom sort of cutting off on the city channel. So if you could just move, oh, thank you, video for turning off the caption. Appreciate it.
Thank you. It's a little hard to do on PowerPoint. So these are just some photos of the exterior building, of the exterior of the building. This is what you see on Torrey. This is the parking lot side. These are some pictures of the interior. There is one of the offices, hallway, reception desk, and reception lobby. Here's some more photos of the current interior. There's the break room. This is a photo upstairs in the attic. There's a bathroom and the office, one another office. It's a nineteen seventies tenant buildout. So since the acquisition of properties, staff have contracted a consultant to prepare architectural existing drawings, another to perform a hazmat report, a project management team to develop initial schedules and programming information, and a surveyor to develop a topograph, topographic map of the site. The initial foray into programming included taking stock of the current staff use of city hall in light of what space is available at the Torrey Avenue property, and what functions are required if the permit center, for example, moves to the annex. Obviously, the Torrey property is much smaller than City Hall, and the question is, what fits in the smaller facility? This is just a larger blow up of that diagram. We needed a concept sketch to get some idea of how many desks and support features we could fit into the building. And so as a, sorry, as a starting point, this is a starting point. It is important to note that we are hiring an architect and an engineering team to design this. This is not a floor plan. It is a diagram with a sense of scale so that we can have a window into what's possible. Our working assumption is that the building will serve as the location of the public facing services of City Hall while that building is out of commission. This diagram shows thirty eight five foot long desks, five small and midsize conference rooms, which can double as offices, counter space for people, and approximately nine hundred square feet of support space, which includes storage and bathroom. So this was just a dip our toe in the water and see what fits. It's not a proposed plan. So an overview of the financial status. The project was funded for three million dollars in fiscal year twenty one, twenty two as part of the CIP. There was a transfer in over twenty five thousand at third quarter. After the expenditures, we have two point nine million available in the project fund. The contract for design services that we're considering tonight is five hundred and eight, oh, just over five hundred and eight thousand dollars. Excuse me, it's a four hundred and forty three thousand dollar contract with fifteen percent contingency. And this will leave approximately two point four million for construction. Next steps and recommended action. The next steps would be if we approve, if the council approves the contract award tonight for design services. After that, we can initiate programming and co compliance, our due diligence on the property with the team. That will be followed by the development of a schematic sign, which we propose to bring back to Council for review before the end of the year. We expect design to last eight to twelve months, and construction will be six to nine months. So this is a copy of the recommended actions that are in the staff report. The recommended action for this item is to approve the agreement for design services for the project that includes a fifteen percent contingency. So authorize the city manager to execute the agreement, and then authorize the Director of Public Works to execute any necessary change, or just up to fifteen percent of this. And so that is all, and we are available for questions.
Great. Thank you very much, Susan. And we'll go to our members of the public. First, we'll go to the Zoom function. There are no hands raised at the current moment. But going over the parameters of the public discussion again, that's three minutes each for each person. If you want to consolidate time, you can contribute up to two minutes each. I do have a hand raised from Jenny right now, and so please have your hand raised by the time the first speaker is done speaking. That's three minute limits again. And after the Zoom hands, we will go to our blue cards, and again, there are no people in the chamber from the public right now. And then we will go to any emails that come into cityclerk@cupertino.org. That's one word, cityclerk@cupertino.org. Okay, so I think that covers all of the ground rules. There's still only one hand raised in Zoom, and so we'll go ahead and call on Jenny. Welcome, Jenny. And you'll have your three minutes. Welcome.
Hi, everybody. Long time no talk. You, I'm really, really glad that you all have this new site. I think it's going to make it a lot easier to give the staff more room, and then also, if the city hall is being remodeled, changed, you you have a lot more area over there that you can work with. It, I'm assuming that this is a two story building. I, if I, if I got that wrong, I apologize. But I was just wondering if that, if this site that you have, I'm assuming it has its own parking lot around it. Is this building something that you all could eventually even add on to if you needed to? Is the building footprint such that, I don't know how much ground, how much land came with this site. I'm kind of familiar with those, those condo, business condos over there. But I'm thinking maybe even down the road, you guys could even think about putting another story on this building or adding on to it if you saw fit to do that. I'm just thinking that it's really nice that you all have this facility and trying to use it to the best of, the best uses while the other main building is being remodeled. Down the road, you might even think about adding on to the annex or putting a third story on if it's possible. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Jennifer, and we are at the end of our hands on Zoom. Madam City Clerk, I know it's just formality, but we have no blue cards, correct?
Correct.
And were there any emails that came in during this period of time?
No, Mayor.
Okay, great. So we're back to the dais, and so let's let's go ahead and follow on with questions and any requests for material information. With a initial, you know, appreciation, thank you for staff for bringing this forward to us as a separate study session. We have a hand raised from Councilmember Wei, and so we'll start with Councilmember Wei. And again, this is questions and requests for further information.
So my my first question, actually, I would like to follow up with our Jenny's comments. My first question is, this plan that's currently on the table, is this the same square footage, fifty two hundred square feet? Right? We're not adding any square footage, it's just?
No, we're not adding anything. We're taking the existing envelope and working within it. We wanted to streamline the process, and by doing that, we don't have to go through planning review so much. Yeah, just try and keep it interior remodel.
Understand. Okay, so does it have seismic upgrade to?
It will require that. We haven't gotten into the detail of it.
Okay, so the budget's around three million dollars?
Yes.
Okay, so if according to the comment from a public comment, Jenny's comment, if eventually we think this could be added a second story or third story, that would not be good to be done in phases, right? If we want to do a second story or three story building, it should be done right now instead of what would it be more, my question is, would it cost more if we, cost less if we do it now, or it's okay to do it in phases?
If I may, it's, in a way, it's similar to the ponds. We're trying to do renovation that is the least expensive, reasonable renovation that facilitates immediate use of the building, because that was identified as a priority. And we're hoping to also provide a plan, design, layout that is the most flexible, so that we could accommodate future uses within this footprint without as much work on the interior as otherwise would be created if we did an extreme build out, for example. But if we wanted to go a second story, I believe that would be possible. We could go, I don't know the planning restrictions on the site, but I'm sure things are possible. We have not considered that at this point.
Mayor, can I have one last question? One quick question?
Yes, please proceed.
Okay, so is this site suitable for EOC? I know, I understand we're just doing the minimum right now, but if, because we're looking at, if we're just going to remodel the city hall, then we have to put EOC somewhere. Would this be a even possible site?
From what I understand, so an EOC is an essential building, essentials facilities type of use. And this building, as it exists today, is a wood structure to type five, you know, kind of residential type construction. I don't believe that you can use that for an EOC. So if, for example, we move in and house staff in a short term basis, we would plan for EOC use if we needed, because that is one of the city hall functions. But we, I don't believe that we are contemplating a serious build out of the EOC in that location at this time.
Okay, so one last question. So if if, say, if we say we want to build our EOC here, then it probably needs to be rebuilt, like a totally new building?
Um, a portion of the building would need to be rebuilt. I mean, I could see doing addition on the back that was a concrete structure, you know, self sustaining. I think it's possible to do it on this site. We'd have to do more investigation.
Okay, thank you. So that's, so far, that's it. Thanks, Mayor.
Okay, thank you very much, Councilmember Wei. Would anyone like to go next? I have a hand from Councilmember Willie and then Councilmember Moore.
Yeah, thank you, Susan. First questions I have, though, I think are for the city manager. You know, at least my my thinking was, when we purchased this, it was intended to facilitate the increase in employees. You know, previously, Public Works in two thousand and eighteen had brought forth the library expansion in a new city hall, increasing the city hall from twenty five thousand to thirty five thousand square feet, ten thousand square feet, to facilitate the growth. This one here, I believe, is fifty six hundred square feet, which is half of that. So the original intent was, boy, that really gives us breathing room at the current city hall, based on its size. I'd be interested in an estimate. Yes, if you're gonna renovate City Hall, that's going to kind of change the way the employees are laid out in there, but still, an estimate. How full is City Hall right now in terms of the number of employees it could accommodate? What's the number of employees that we're currently having there? Are there more than would normally be expected? And then how then does this fifth, extra fifty six hundred square feet of annex kind of work with that? Knowing that is kind of going to tell me what the future looks like. And then one caveat. If the the current EOC, as I understand it, was the original council chambers and has never been really changed, such that it's as big space that now is designated as the EOC. If the EOC then is moved either over toward the annex or to the If the EOC then is moved either over toward the annex or to the public works yard in a new building there, and that current council chamber area was office space, how would that fit the current and allow for future growth of employee, employees with this extra annex? And I haven't, I haven't heard anything about that, but I'd sure like to know what, what that looks like.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Willie. I believe our city manager is looking to answer your questions there.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor and Councilmember Willie. I don't have numbers, I don't know if Susan does, on, you know, how many are housed in currently the city hall and how many we can house over there. I don't, I wish I had those. But prospectively, we're still in a, a growth pattern, especially if we're seeing more residential units coming in, more businesses coming in. So to maintain a service level, they're probably, you know, how much, it's, it's hard to say, but there'll probably still be some employee growth at some point here. If we continue the modified telecommute, so some are in, some are out, that helps with space constraints also. If we were to move the EOC somewhere else outside of city hall, then that facility, you know, to me, it'd be ideal to just go through and essentially take it wall-to-wall and rebuild the inside, and that would also take away the, the older chamber and distribute that to offices and cubicles and whatever else. So that would be a large help, I think. I just don't have that ability, you know? That might be something I can get with Susan to work on.
Yeah, I would at least ask, you know, back-of-the-envelope-type estimate, you know, so that we kind of understand what the, the, the future kind of is looking like, because I think it's great that Susan's now looking at how to make this annex the most flexible so that renovation work can be done at city hall. So that's great. But still, having a back-of-the-envelope so that we kind of know, you know, the work plan or the CIP for city hall is kind of asking us to allocate money, start design-type activity, but I'd really like to see a back-of-the-envelope estimate, you know, realizing things will change, but, you know, if, if we did reconfigure city hall and we currently have, you know, 100 employees there and you reconfigure it, you might move it to 110 or 120, and that's some breathing room, then the annex being able to take, you know, there's 28, I believe, parking spaces, so if there were 28 people over there, that's more breathing room. I'd really like to see that, especially considering the CIP is going to be asking us. So how quick you could turn over a back-of-the-envelope estimate, I, I think, you know, try to, try to give us an idea of what that future would look like, and I'll leave it at that.
Okay, and I'll just look, I'm looking at Susan here on the screen. You got your hand up, go ahead.
Okay, I have. Thanks, Jim. Welcome back.
Thank you. Thank you for the questions. Presently at city hall, I believe we have 130 or maybe 133 staff that are seated at city hall. And if you walk around, you'll see that we are, well, maybe you can't tell, but the desks are very cramped and people are sharing desks. That is all affected by the telework policy, though, so it's a little different dynamic. If I do the layout of the city hall annex, that's why we tried to see how many desks would fit. And while you can fit 38 desks, I think when you, from my experience and what I was looking at, it's more realistic to say 20 to 25 people might be able to sit over there, depending on the uses. So if it becomes all lawyers' offices, then it needs a different type of space distribution than if it, the counter people or, you know, different, different sized uses. So it depends on what we're putting in there, but I would say I wouldn't go over 25 people for estimation. Does that answer your question, Councilmember?
So it does. It would sure help, though, to actually try to put that on paper so that, you know, we can kind of, you know, redline it and stuff. Again, one of the caveats or one of the notes is if the current council chamber at city hall was considered as office space rather than EOC, and you're reconfiguring, you know, reconfiguring even the way it is today, reconfiguring, you know, you're going to try to increase the number of employees, and then the council chambers, and then the annex, you know, kind of trying to put that down on paper so we have something to, to really discuss up here on the dais when that CIP comes to us for the different options. And so, great that you're able to, you know, give some numbers tonight, you know, spur the moment, but it should be nice if we saw that a little bit more solidified when we're going to be talking about city hall. So thank you very much, Karen.
All right, Susan.
If I may respond?
Oh, yes, please, please do.
Thank you. The, one of the reasons that we are interested in hiring this particular design team is that they have a stated expertise in workplace design, and so we are interested in exploring our, making sure that we're putting in smart workplace and basically setting, you could say, we want to get, rely on a furniture solution in this case because we're trying not to build as many walls, and that's another skill set that, or another resource that we can use for our work at city hall. So we are definitely trying to set the stage for how the city refer, or uses its real estate on the interiors more solidly by this contract.
Great, thank you very much, Susan. Excellent. So next we have Councilmember Moore, followed by Vice Mayor Chow.
Thank you, Susan. I was reading a little bit about the lead and asbestos testing, which had been conducted, and I was hoping you could provide an update on, on that, just kind of a summary of what they found. And I really appreciate the explanation of the, the floor area analysis, for lack of a better term for it, because I was looking at it, wondering if they had actually decided what the floor plan was going to be, so thank you for explaining that. With regards to using it as an emergency operations center, I'd like to hear some more information and maybe not necessarily tonight, but about the emergency operations center for, for Cupertino, like how much space do, do they actually need? What kind of computer setup do they, do they need? Phone lines? And, and I'm wondering that because we have our, our West Valley Sheriff's Department out on Danza Boulevard, and then we also have our separate fire stations, and I, I don't quite understand how the coordination would be with regards to our disaster coordination for providing information out. So when you're looking at the emergency ops at, at, at this location, how, how would you determine how much space is needed? Has there been a, a study about that? Because I've also wondered, looking at the, the EOC room in community hall, what, what's actually special about that room? What was it outfitted with that, that makes it unique for that particular use? Okay, thank you.
So you mean the EOC room where? Is that community hall?
I mean, I, city hall.
So, okay, so the old council chambers, basically?
Right.
Well, there's, there's nothing special about that that makes it kind of a good fit for an EOC, right? I mean, because it wasn't designed to be an EOC. I guess, is that basically your point?
Yeah, I'm wondering if, well, there was an article from 2013 talking about Palo Alto updating their EOC, and it was in a building that did not have a seismic upgrade to it, but they chose to upgrade the, the furnishings, I would say, the computer furnishings and that type of thing.
Okay, sorry, started on up. I just wanted to
No, no problem.
clarify the location first off, and then, you know, just get a sense of where you're going with that comment on the EOC being, given the fact that it was the old council chambers. But Susan, that was a, or Jim, or Eric, or whoever can field those questions, would you like to speak to the points that Councilmember Moore raised? And so, Susan, thanks.
Yes, absolutely. Thank you. About the EOC, if you were to have the opportunity to speak with our EOC manager, Tom Chen, he can go into great detail about the EOC needs and the technical program. There was a study that was done a few years ago, and he, we did look at that in terms of trying to develop, let's say, a programming document to understand what we will need going forward, and I believe that that would be a good topic for future council sessions. I'm happy to facilitate a memo about what's known about the EOC as well. But also, one of your other questions was about the hazmat report that we had done, and yes, we did have that done a little bit out of sequence, but we wanted to know what the impact would be. And they did find lead-based paint on the walls. There was some pylo-style, I can't say it, some materials in the adhesives for the tile, or tiles that needs to be addressed. I believe there was also some hazardous materials in the caulking, or something to do with the windows. So that would have to be remedied before the contractor be on site. That is either encapsulated or removed in a very well-defined process.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Moore. Next we have Vice Mayor Chow.
Hey, thank you. So again, this presentation is great. It has a lot of pictures. I especially like the part where you put the city hall and then the, and it's in their relative size, so we can see visually that it's like one half of one floor of the city hall, that visually. And so it makes sense that if the current city hall accommodated about 120 staff, one level is 60, and the half of that is 30, so the new annex accommodated about 30 desk or people. I'm guessing that makes sense, but unfortunately, the staff report has no images, and I hope that in the future, when we have this kind of project, it's important to include images in the staff report so that the public can see them, then they can form their opinion, comment before, they don't have to wait until the presentation. And again, the presentation right now is combining for the entire city, so I hope that please include this wonderful presentation in the CIP page for this project, that the, the public has easy access to them. And also that we have also multiple pieces of the Civic Center Plaza project and the long history before, up until 2018, when it was included with library expansion. So I think it would be great if we have a webpage that was links to the library expansion, to the old Civic Center Plaza and the city hall improvement and this annex. That way, everything is in one place and maybe possible meetings in chronological order. I think that would be easier for the public to have access to them. So those are the requests. And then question, I see that the earlier contract for the pond, we, they are by lowest bid. It's great that the staff report has all the bid and their amount. And then here in this one, we, our RFQ is out. Staff report is really great that you pointed out, there were five bids, two were selected for interview, and one of them was selected. Since this one is not by lowest bid, so I'm just trying to understand what's the difference between the two selection process?
If I may?
Yes, please.
So first of all, I will mention that we have been working on a webpage for the city hall project, simply to address what you're talking about, is there's a great deal of history, and we wanted to make it accessible to the public. That should be coming soon, especially now that we have a new communications officer. I'm looking forward to working with her further on that. And secondly, oh, the difference, why this was not a low-bid situation? So the public contract code requires that when we do construction projects, that we go with the low, low bid, but it has to be a qualified bid. It has to be someone who's qualified, so we can't just take any old bid. It has to meet the basic requirements, and it has to be defendable position, and we can't choose our cousin unless we, unless that is a qualified bid. When it comes to design services, because it's more difficult, I would say, to get apples-to-apples comparisons, it, you are allowed to do what we call an RFQ, which is request for qualifications, and choose the most qualified professionals. So it is a similar public process where we post the RFQ, so that's why we also shared those documents in the staff report as amendments to show what we asked of the people that submitted qualifications. And then we did an interview process, and then after all of that, we looked at the fee and negotiated the fee with that, with this particular firm dialogue to move forward. We believed this to be the best professional for the project.
Yeah, thank you. So the next few questions is related to the staff report that I highlight here. It says the staff has interviewed internal department to assess programming requirements, so I wonder what's the interview result? And then the next, and contracted and produced as built documentation, I don't understand what, what does that mean? Contracted and produced as built documentation? So that's the second question. And third question is, here it says that the design team from this contract will engage stakeholders. So what are considered the stakeholders for this project?
Thank you for the questions. So the programming exercise, we internally wanted to understand what each department needs in the interim solution. So consider, we asked the different departments, Public Works, Administrative Services, City Attorney's Office. If we were to move into Torrey Avenue, what facilities would be required of your department that are public-facing? So we wanted to understand more about the public counters, finance offers, for example, public hours window, so we did a lot of questions there. We also asked the question, I'm trying to understand what each department needs in terms of their roles in city hall, and we just asked a lot of questions. How are you using the spaces? What spaces do you need? What kind of support spaces? What kind of, like, for example, I learned that the planning department not, doesn't just need their desks, but since they're reviewing the West Ports and other large projects, they need a space for their boards and the materials that are received, and they need to have a room to have meetings with those clients. So we learned a lot through that process, just so that we can engage, we'll take the information that we gathered internally, and we're going to take that back to our architects and engineers and ask them to do a real programming exercise. So they're going to do a little analysis based on their knowledge of workplace standards and what they would recommend.
So are these questions mainly regarding the need for interim city hall, or are these questions also is for long-term environment? And then are these, do these questions include the current or future remote working possibility?
We tried to use the opportunity of engaging the department heads and other leaders to ask them both scenarios. So we just tried to be thorough, given the opportunity to speak and ask questions, to ask the questions about the short term as well as the long term. to ask the questions about the short term as well as the long term, so that we had a better understanding of the culture and that what were the requirements were.
Have you considered the remote work?
Not fully yet. Yeah.
Right now?
Yeah.
Okay.
Not to say we're not open, not to say we don't want it, it's just we are trying to address the full need of the city hall and staff.
That probably should be considered for this consultant, which will be doing the exercise.
Yes.
And then the second, yeah.
The as-built documentation? So I might apologize, I'm an architect, so if I use industry standards or terms, I don't even think that they're speaking in code that I probably am. So basically, when we acquired the facility, there were some hand-drawn drawings from 1977 that were on faded blueprints. So in order to move the project forward and facilitate any design work, we knew that we needed drawings of the building as it is. That's called an as-built. So we commissioned a firm to do 2D and 3D documentation of the building so that it can be used by the architects and engineers moving forward.
That's a penicillin, yeah.
The third question, yeah, and that's all.
The stakeholders, I think the initial stakeholders are in the room, the staff and council, because we are the people that will be using the facility most directly. But of course, the community is a huge stakeholder. We are trying to provide a public-facing facility, so that will be an important part of the discussion.
Okay, great. Let's go on to Councilmember Moore. Before we do that, Susan, thank you for the last comment. You mentioned the staff and council. Is there a contemplation of an officer too for the council members in an effort to, you know, gain a little bit of transparency into whatever activities end up getting migrated to that building?
I am afraid to answer that. And I say that very jokingly. We haven't actually been able to, we've gathered all of the needs and I think there's more need that'll fit in that building, frankly.
Okay.
So if you were to, for example, consider the telework environment that we're operating in, we've been doing so much from home, but we are actually, we as a city are open to the public again. And so there is more need for public interaction, community meeting rooms, places for the city, for the community to meet with the city manager, with the mayor, with the council. And I believe those actual, those are great needs that need to be addressed. And so that's part of why the programming is not to complete. It is definitely still open-ended and needs to be discussed and worked out.
Yeah, I mean, I would just, to put a really tangible metric on it, we have a council office and we have a mayor's office. And I think the council office, if you combine that space with the mayor's office, maybe there's sufficient space to divvy it up into three different councils, you know, offices. But it would be nice to be able to have an office space for each council member. Because I think at the end of the day, what ends up happening is that we don't have enough space for all five of us. And I think in the interest of, I think, fostering, you know, a better understanding of where, you know, the council's coming from, where, you know, our staff is, you know, coming from and what we're respectively working on, having those workspaces close to each other, I think are actually, is actually a pretty important, you know, idea. And it would be nice to see not just this space, you know, kind of designed and built out from the outset with that in mind, but also as we're prospectively remodeling city hall or, you know, whatever we end up, you know, proceeding with, having an idea that, okay, we have five council members, five representatives of the public, so let's give them, you know, access to the public spaces. Because I guess practically speaking, you know, and I've only been through on a couple of, you know, full cycles and I realize that it changes from time to time. But from what I've seen, actually, you know, you end up having the council office big enough for essentially one person, right? And the mayor's office, of course, is the mayor's office. But I mean, I think if you have the opportunity to put, you know, a member of the public inside of the, you know, the building function or the planning function, without being intrusive, of course. But, you know, I think that just actually enhances the ability to get to the point where we're at right now for, you know, the projects that we've seen tonight and have those, you know, types of direct discussions. I think it just makes for a better setup for our public process, but also just, you know, sort of the behind-the-scenes engagement that'll lead to that kind of, you know, positive sort of synergy. So, Councilmember Moore, thanks for the forbearance for that, you know, quick interlude there. So, Councilmember Moore, you have the next questions or follow-ups.
I'm sorry, Mayor, I was going to make a motion, actually.
Oh, okay. I don't see further hands raised, but Vice Mayor Chow does have her hand raised again. So Vice Mayor, if you have further, you know, questions or follow-ups, we'll go ahead and open it up for discussion after this motion is set on the table and hopefully seconded. What's your motion, Councilmember Moore?
Okay, I'm just going to read it directly from the staff report.
Okay.
Okay, I move that we, one, authorize the city manager to execute a design professional services agreement between the city and Dialog Design LP to provide design services for the city hall annex in the amount of $443,480. And two, authorize the director of public works to execute any necessary services or change orders up to a contingency amount of $65,022. That's 15% of base services for a total appropriation of $508,502.
Do I have a second for Councilmember Moore's motion? Councilmember Willy, you're raising your hand. A second?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, Councilmember Willy, seconds. All right, let's go back to the hands that are now raised. We'll go to Councilmember Willy after Vice Mayor Chow. And Vice Mayor Chow?
Does Councilmember Willy wants to come in?
I believe so, yes.
I'll come in first, yeah.
Okay, great. Thanks. Councilmember Willy.
Yeah, so this is a question that I forgot to ask before. I'll start with a slight statement. When we had the Crest Awards and Gary Lackshaw got the Sustainability Champion, he happened to mention in what he was talking about is that Sunnyvale is now fully electrifying their city hall. So at the break, I went up and I asked him, you know, hey, really, what can you tell us about what they're doing? He said, well, I can't tell you anything. All I know is what I heard is that they were doing it. Okay, if we're going to be, you know, kind of renovating Torrey Avenue, Susan, can we go ahead and make it fully electric? I think the only thing there would be the heating and the hot water heater. And so, you know, to put a little extra dollar in to make those fully electric at this time and start us on the path of a fully electric city hall slash annex. Any comment on that at this time?
Right. Electrification is actually a priority for the city and it'd be thrilling to make this building an all-electric building. We will have to work that into our engineering and also see what the real impact is. I believe that it can be quite costly, at least in the short term. So we will remember the request and bring it back to council at a appropriate time.
Very quick follow-up on that, if I may, Councilmember Willy. So at the US Marriage Conference, there's just a lot of talk amongst, you know, people that are interested in the federal government, you know, funds that are being released. A lot of electrification support is happening, and so it seems like we could have decent follow-ups. I have at least two really good contacts on the federal level and nonprofit level as a result of this conference. So I am meaning on a very top level to make those follow-ups immediate. And so, yeah, it does sound like there is an opportunity here and this particular project seems to, you know, dovetail nicely in timing. So hopefully, you know, we can keep that flexibility in terms of, you know, taking advantage of some of the opportunities here. I think maybe grant funding would be, you know, a special area that we haven't necessarily applied to buildings, but, you know, it's also something that is shored up fairly well in, I think, our personnel right now. So we do have, I think, some grant funding personnel teed up. And then also, you know, there's also, I think, some justification for a federal lobbyist, especially given the fact that, you know, there's a very significant amount of money being released by the federal government in the, I don't know, how much, how many numbers is a trillion? It's like 10 figures, right? Something like that. So it's just a lot of money out there floating. So Vice Mayor Chow, or actually, Councilmember Willy, did you have anything else at this point before we go to?
The only slight comment would be, it seems like, you know, a fairly small building would be a good place for us to get our feet wet and then we'd have a little bit more to go on when we start talking about electrifying city hall.
Sure. All right. Thanks, Councilmember Willy. Vice Mayor Chow, and then followed by Councilmember Way, and then followed by Councilmember Moore.
Thank you. So how many parking spaces are there?
I counted 22 from the aerial, but Susan, do you have a specific number?
I don't know that offhand. That sounds about right.
Okay. I mean, I could, I could, I could share my screen. Let me just.
That's okay.
Okay. Yeah, well, I counted 22. I heard a number of like 28 as well, but, yeah.
Yeah. Regarding, I think Palo Alto, there's contracts for lobbying include both state and federal lobbying. So I'm liking option. Next is I want to, I want to put on the record that initially, when we purchased this building, what I was thinking about is at that time, the council had on the work program from a previous council, by the way inherited is an item of small business development center. And I'm told, I asked, how come that one hasn't been done? Because it has been on the work program for two or three years. I'm told it's because of a lack of space. They, in this kind of center volunteer, meet with small business to help them plan or help them find finding and also even give them advice on how to build a better business. And I think San Jose Public Library has a similar kind of space for people to meet. And then another thing we have heard from Cupertino residents at the Women Professional Luncheon, where we used to have, a lot of women are, have their own home business. And when they have kids in school, they go home and then they have their own business. But then there is a lack of meeting space in Cupertino. I think in other cities, they have more co-working space, but not Cupertino. And so if, I know, yeah, we, the city also has a lot of need, but if there is a way to provide flexibility so that some meeting spaces could be reserved or by Cupertino residents or for the business development center, that would be great. And then another thing that we had in mind was a potential Cupertino store. Right now, it's online mostly, but maybe there could be a corner to display Cupertino store items. And then we sparkled, people can order online. And another possibility is a visitor center. Yeah, it may not have to be a full-blown visitor center, but could be a wall with a map or the interesting point and they can go online and actually visit those, online visitor center. So those are some ideas I hope the design team could consider. Then that means your stakeholder is not only the staff and the council, but also possibly people could use the space in these ways. As for council, as for a dedicated office for each council member, I'm not sure we need that.
Well, you say that, but you basically use the council office, right?
I know.
Sort of to the exclusion of others. I mean, without trying to be too blunt about it, right? Well, I mean, but at the same time, you know, like, people don't feel necessarily as comfortable using the space if your stuff is there, right? So I mean, I just, I'm just saying, I think it'll probably help with kind of interfacing the council with the employees. But, you know, that's fair. It's fair to make your points. So let's go on to Councilmember Way, since we're running pretty short on time and we do have a motion on the table. And then we'll get to Councilmember Moore. So, Councilmember Way?
Okay, so I'm just going to follow up with both Councilmember Willy and Councilmember Chow's comments. I do agree with Councilmember Willy that if we can get this to be a reach code, you know, environmentally friendly, all-electric, I think that would be very good. And that's what each of our building, that whether we model, rebuild, is what it should be. We set up our own goals, our city facility needs to reflect that. That's my first comment. My second comment is, I really like what Councilmember Chow says, you know, we have all kinds of needs. We really do. So I'm okay with this proposal, but I'm a little uncomfortable that maybe there is a, it's a great place for us to have a two-story or three-story, brand-new, reach-code building that could accommodate whatever Councilmember Chow wants and then also what Councilmember Willy's. So my question for staff is, yes, we're spending money on conceptual design. Is it possible to have also a add-on conceptual design? If that's a brand-new, reach-code building, what it would look like? That could accommodate everything Councilmember Chow wants and also a brand-new, reach-code, you know, it's that, whatever our city has set up for environmental standards, that gets done. Because every building that we remodel or build needs to have, reach our own standards. Is it possible to have that kind of a design add-on to it so we have options? So, you know, when they come back to council, we have options. If it's a three-to-three-story, accommodate a lot of space, you know, completely electric, reach-code building, what it would cost, what it would look like? Because I do think we have opportunity, if we have ready-to-go projects, that is much easier to get grants from federal or state because it's ready to go. It's designed, ready to go, and then we can go funding. And it needs to be ready to go. So do we have that opportunity in this building?
We are definitely going to be following our sustainability goals for the city. Definitely the facility-related aspirations that we've noted in the Climate Action Plan. We're trying to do everything we can to make this model for our other facilities and to do, set the standard. This design contract does not include a redesign. It only includes an interior retrofit and specifying and designing the building to that interior retrofit. So to do a full-on, please look at more options, more, and it could be a parking garage. We don't have that built into this design contract, let's say. That would be an additional contract.
So how much budget would that be if it could provide council some options?
I don't know.
Oh, okay.
We'd have to ask, yeah. I'd be afraid to guess and set expectations. I'm sorry.
No problem. So what I question for my fellow council members, do we have a desire to have more options?
Yeah, I mean, to speak to your point and Vice Mayor Chow's point, I mean, I think maybe our eyes are bigger than our, you know, appetite for, you know, our capacity for this particular, you know, space. So I mean, what I would suggest is, you know, there are a lot of stated needs and, you know, we seem to have some financial foothold. I mean, thinking about strategically, you know, obtaining real estate in the future, that is something a plan would be helpful in terms of realizing. So I would suggest that we, you know, support this because we're going for a particular need here, which is to have additional space that we not just anticipate, but clearly see even with, you know, remote work being a significant portion of what we're doing right now. And, you know, think about in the future, the possibility of starting a right now. And, you know, think about in the future, the possibility of starting a, starting a fund of some kind, starting a strategy for, you know, acquiring real estate. Another way of going about it is to work with, you know, other property owners that are in, you know, the city as well. But I, I, I would just, I think caution against trying to turn this 5,000 square feet into, you know, something that is probably more appropriately, you know, relegated to a significantly larger amount of space in terms of like all the various community needs that we can think of. But, you know, this is an area that has a fairly significant amount of office space, and it's not uncommon, I think, to, you know, conjecture that there may be future opportunities in the Civic Center area. So, you know, and that's only one part of our, our city, of course, so. Let me go to Councilmember Moore at this time, if that's okay. Councilmember Way, if you're concluded, and...
I'm, I'm done. I just want to ask my fellow councilmembers, do we have, do we want more options? Spend a little bit more money, but have some options. And also, I do think the federal has a lot of funding right now, and if we can have ready, ready-to-go project, we might get some really good funding, apply for grants, that it's an opportunity.
Sure, of course. Yeah, and I, I think we can review that as well in our upcoming, you know, work to try to see what available opportunities are out there for, for funding support. So, Councilmember Moore, and I'll, I'll make note of time, we're at 11:59. If we can wrap, and, you know, if there isn't an appetite for a vote, fine, but if we can, I'd like to, you know, call the question that's on the table here. Councilmember Moore?
Okay, um, thank you, Mayor Paul. So I, I do appreciate the, the aspiration towards a green building design for this structure. I also appreciate the conservative approach towards this particular building. I think that, at this time, that is a, a very prudent, a prudent approach. I'm looking at Department of Homeland Security Notice of Funding Opportunity Fiscal Year 2022 Emergency Operations Center Grant Program, and that just opened May 13th of this year, when I did a little searching for some California cities in their EOCs. I, that's where I came across the FEMA funding that some of the cities have received. So we, they have a handful of California cities which have received funding grants to update their EOCs, and we might want to look into that for this, for the City Hall, potentially. And with that, I would actually like to hear from the city manager, your opinion of this particular project and the, the road we're going down here versus potentially tearing down the building at this point and, and building two or three stories there.
You're talking about the Torrey Building?
Yes.
Um, that's a good question. You, you know, right now, I think just what we're looking at here, if we come back later, because this is gonna go on for a while, so, and Susan can correct me if I'm wrong, but we could always come back at a later date, too, with another modification of the contract after we say, "Yeah, we wanna see what it would cost to go up a story or two." But I think if we start down this path, we can then also continue any kind of discussion, if that's the case, on, you know, if we're gonna renovate City Hall. I think that's gonna be the next question, too, on whether we need X more, more space, do we need two more levels over there? I think there, it's, it's a larger discussion than I can give you an answer for right at this moment.
Okay, um, thank you. And I, one thing that's kind of interesting between these two structures is they both have the, the clay tile roof on them, so, but I don't see that, because of the, this distance separating them to, and I don't see a continuity between those two designs. And I don't know that Susan spoke about the architectural style of, of the building as it is. If, if you could define it, I would appreciate that. And I, I don't think there's going to be any plan to alter the exterior, that it would be maintained as it is. Is that correct?
Yes, for the most part, that's correct. I would say this is California mission. But, um, let's see if I remember your questions. The plan is to leave the exterior as, as it is, as much as possible. We would, I know we need to replace the windows, for example, so that would be some exterior modifications. And we also need to provide accessible entrances and parking for the site. So those would be some of the exterior modifications. We also noted in our contract to look at the landscaping, to, I mean, it's gorgeous landscaping, but we wanna make sure that we're not being water, um, we wanna be savvy, and so we wanna make sure that we're not creating a problem by having, as a beautiful garden, so we're gonna make sure that we're doing right by the environment in that way as well.
Okay, great. Well, we're past midnight now, so unless we're gonna take a vote, I'm gonna go ahead and continue this item to Thursday. I see a hand is raised by Vice Mayor Chow, and so I'm assuming Vice Mayor, you mean by that to take us to a, a further point of discussion, which is fine, but we're past the midnight hour or so. I'm gonna go ahead, unless we're in agreement to go ahead and take a vote on the motion on the table. I, I do see two nods. I would like to vote. And so, Councilmember Way, are you okay with voting on this motion? A nod? All right, Vice Mayor Chow, I'm gonna, you know, respectfully disregard your hand that's up, and go ahead and call for a vote for the motion on the table from the city clerk as a roll-call vote.
First, I want to say that I, I would be happy to see a potential two-story option in the future, not now.
Okay, thank you, Vice Mayor Chow. Madam City Clerk, please proceed.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Way?
Aye.
Councilmember Willy?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Chow?
Aye.
Mayor Paul?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
All right, thank you very much. We are now on item 39, which I'll go ahead and entertain a motion to continue to Thursday for our special meeting. And I have that motion, Councilmember Moore.
So moved.
And I'll go ahead and second that motion for the sake of, you know, moving this along. And so, Vice Mayor Chow, I see a hand raised from you, and Councilmember Way, if you wanted to second it, that's fine.
No, it's fine.
Okay, Vice Mayor Chow, did you want to speak to continuing item 39 to the Thursday special meeting?
Oh, when we continued the items to another meeting last time, we didn't have a chance to talk about future agenda item, and I, I hope we have that on Thursday.
Okay, duly noted.
Yeah.
Okay, duly noted. We'll go ahead and, yeah. If we have enough time, yeah, thank you, thank you, Vice Mayor. If we have enough time, and there's time before midnight on Thursday, we'll go ahead and continue. We'll, we'll go ahead and have the future agenda items on the special meeting agenda. Okay, so, Councilmember Willy, you have a hand raised?
So, one comment for Thursday, since we've continued, I think it was 37, the CIP funding. What I would suggest, we've all turned in our rankings for the CIP items. We, I think, more than just myself, have had comments. I would think if we would, before we actually go into the item 37, if staff were to bring us back with what the rankings are, give us time for deliberations with updates to the descriptions, try and hold it to maybe a half hour, and then we go into the funding of that number 37. See, without that direction, I would think all we're gonna get is 37 that we didn't get to tonight.
Um, I, I'm, I'm not really 100% clear on what you're requesting, Councilmember Willy, but...
The card and the horse, and, and the, the horse is us approving the CIP items with whatever adjustments we feel are needed.
Right.
And then the card is the funding.
I, I, I guess, I'm not really 100% clear on what would need to be added to the CIP evaluation. I know that you got your CIP ranking in, in a little bit later, right? So are you basically asking to integrate your vote, your ratings to, you know?
Well, I think all of our ratings need to be compiled.
Have been compiled, but I think they've been compiled, haven't they, in item 37? So...
But that wasn't part of tonight's...
Um, I thought that was part of tonight's materials that were published with the agenda, but, well, let, let me do this, because I wanna make sure that we're, you know, I, I, I wanna make sure that we're adequately noticed and, you know, following the agenda. I, I'll, I'll work with our city manager to make sure that we have clarity, and we'll go over your request here.
Good, yep.
And do our best tomorrow to be able to prepare the materials.
Great.
And, so that'll be item 37. But on the table right now is to continue item 39 to Thursday, and so without any further questions or comments, Vice Mayor Chow knows that you, you do have your hand up, but I would like to take a vote on this for item 39 to continue to Thursday, June 9th. And so Madam City Clerk, if you can take a roll-call vote on that, that motion.
Pardon, pardon, Mayor. Are you also continuing the future agenda items?
Uh, I, I did state that that would be on our special meeting agenda, yes.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not continuing it. I'm just gonna make sure that it's, it's on the special meeting agenda, or however it would work appropriately. So, anyone, please feel free to interject if that's needed. Okay, seeing no further comments, Madam City Clerk, can you please take a roll-call vote on this item 39 continuing to Thursday, June 9th?
Mayor, may I just ask, is there a time for the meeting on Thursday?
Uh, right now, we're projecting 8 o'clock for the special meeting, because of the fact that we have a special closed session starting at 6:30, and the allocation is 90 minutes. So...
That's not part of your motion, though?
Right. Well, but thank you for asking, so that we can place that time on the record. So, I, I'll go ahead and make that part of the motion. So special meeting starting at 8:00 PM on June 9th, and as the seconder of the motion, I'll go ahead and accept that. I think, Councilmember Moore, you, you made the motion, correct?
I believe so, yes.
Okay, so, so 8:00 PM, correct?
Yes.
All right. All right, great. And remind me, Madam City Clerk, did I second the motion, or was that Councilmember Willy?
Yes, yes, Mayor, you seconded.
Okay, great. So, so we have a clarified motion on the table. Please conduct that roll-call vote.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Way?
Aye.
Councilmember Willy?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Chow?
Aye.
Mayor Paul?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, great, thank you very much. We'll go ahead and adjourn tonight's meeting. Well done. And before we do that, our city manager would like to, oh, thank you very much for the reminder. Uh, this is very, very, very heavy-hearted news that came into our city earlier this week. We did have a, a former employee of the city of Cupertino, you know, tragically passed away, and our city manager would like to say a few words with regard to that before we adjourn in, in that former employee's memory.
Thank you, Mayor. It, it is very, just a short one. It's, the family's still going through the, the trauma that they had, but, thank you, Mayor, and we'd like to be able to adjourn the meeting tonight in memory of the former Cupertino employee who did pass away recently in a very tragic accident, and that's Brooke Shriver. She served as a park ranger for the Parks and Recreation Department over in the Stephen Creek's corridor. The city wants to extend its deepest condolences to the family, and just adjourn this meeting in her memory.
All right. Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Our city council meeting of June 7th is hereby adjourned in memory of our former employee and member of the city of Cupertino family, Brooke Shriver. Thank you very much, everyone. Have a good evening, and this meeting is hereby adjourned. Good night.